Good afternoon, welcome to the Housing and Economic Development Committee hearing. I am Councilman James Torrance, Chair of the Committee, Representative from District 7. Today, the committee will hear Council Bill 25003, Historic Preservation/Conservation Districts Establishment, 25003 R, informational hearing permits. In attendance today, we have Council President Zee Cohen, we have Councilwoman and Vice Chair of the Committee, Odette Ramos of the 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. And then we have Councilman Zach Blanchard of 11th District, and also in attendance is Councilman Jermaine Jones of the 12th District. And then our first bill, which will be heard at Conservation District, we also have Councilman John Bullock of the 9th District. Thank you, sir. And members of the President's Office present are Erin de Grasse Wright, we have Shamoya Gardner, Lucinda Leslie, and then members of the Mayor's Office, I believe Tyler is on his way up, Tyler Chanel. With that being said, let's begin Bill 25003, Historic Preservation/Conservation Districts Establishment, for the purpose of establishing conservation districts, providing a study, proposal, and review process, defining certain terms, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on January 13th, 2025, by Councilman Bullock. Does Councilman Bullock have any sponsor comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, folks. I've had the pleasure to serve as the City Council's representative to CHAP since our first term back in 2016, and actually, we had a CHAP hearing this afternoon, and it came to my attention that this is a concept that goes back at least 21 years in terms of thinking about conservation districts. Colloquially, we refer to them as CHAP Lite. I happen to represent a number of communities that are CHAP districts. However, we recognize that history in Baltimore is not just confined to these previously established CHAP districts. There are many parts of Baltimore, particularly in southwest and west Baltimore, and we have some advocates here from west Baltimore as well, who recognize that there is significant history, but oftentimes, there hasn't been that recognition of that history. And so what this would do is provide the opportunity for council members to introduce legislation to establish conservation districts. This is something that we've had conversations with CHAP and CHAP staff, and we believe this is a fruitful way to preserve the history and the legacy of our communities, and at the same time, create a pathway forward for the future and maintaining that structure and that character of our community. So, again, I appreciate us having this opportunity. This was a bill, just to let you know, had been introduced at the end of our last term, were not able to get over the finish line, so we're happy and pleased to be here today to give it another push and hopefully get a favorable disposition. So, again, thank you for the opportunity and look forward to discussion.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock. We're now moving to agency reports. First agency report is from the City Solicitor's Office.
Good evening, Desiree Lucky, on behalf of the City Solicitor's Office, we stand by our favorable bill report and approve for legal form and sufficiency.
Thank you, CHAP.
Our report is favorable, and we're really excited about pursuing this legislation and really creating an important new tool for Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you, DCHD.
Thank you, Chair Torrance, Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you, DOT. Well, they reported favorable, so we're gonna move on. DPW has no recommendation, City Solicitor is not present, BDC, no one's here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom Welling, on behalf of BDC, we stand by our favorable report.
Planning Commission.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission, the Commission continues to recommend approval.
Thank you. Department, oh, actually, you could stay there, too. Department of Planning was also on the report, the Commission and the Department, so I'll take it as both as favorable. And then Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Laura Larson, City Budget Director. The Department stands behind our bill response in opposition to the bill.
Thank you. Prior to the hearing, the committee received on members' desks amendments that reflect to ensure that we can have due passage today. What you will see is the Mayor's Office of Government Relations Amendment, which will remove the local tax credit, and then you will see the Chair's Amendment on your desk as well, which will allow to have access to the state's tax credit. We will be swapping in lieu of both. For the public's understanding, the local tax credit would lock into taxes for 10 years, whereas the state tax credit allows the persons for each property access to a $50,000 tax return every two years for each property. So, it would provide access to a tax return versus a cap on taxes, so an immediate relief for the persons who own the homes, or what's safe for improvements to their home as well. That was the agreement that we had both with the sponsor and the administration. Would someone like to move MOGRs amendments?
I have a question.
Shoot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Amendment Number One, under your name, would be where the language says Conservation District includes a local historic district, which would allow for that conservation district to be considered a local historic district, which then properties within that local historic district would be eligible for the state historic tax credit.
That is correct, and it makes reference to the KMR citation, which would make us compliant with state law.
Do we want to use, is, or includes works? The Law Department approved this already.
Do you have a copy?
It's right here. The Law Department already approved these.
I believe they were, but...
And Department of Finance, that satisfies your opposition?
Yes.
We'll wait for it, Desiree.
Okay. Because if I understand your opposition, it's because you didn't want the tax credit included, the local tax. These are fine, we can prove.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? With that, I'll entertain a motion to move... We can move the amendments first and do public testimony.
Move the amendment?
A motion has been made to move the first amendment, which is MOGR's amendment. Is there a second? Moved by Ramos, seconded by Jones. Tony, can we go to a vote? We don't, sorry, I'm so used to Richard. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of us oppose? First Amendment is moved. Is there a motion to approve the second amendment by the Chair?
To move.
Is there a second? Moved by Ramos, seconded by Jones. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of us oppose? Both amendments have been passed. Is there a motion to approve the bill as... Oh, thank you, guys. Is there any public testimony prior to us moving the amendments? Red button.
Press the button.
The red button.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sujata Massey. I've been a resident of the city for 33 years as a renter and a homeowner. I currently live in the Wyndhurst neighborhood, which is not under historic preservation guidelines, and I've been in conversations with my neighbors for the last two years about this, and a lot of us are concerned. We've had situations where flippers have come in and they've done things. It's like a neighborhood of shingle cottages, and they've put aluminum boxes around the shingle cottage, and we have absolutely no recourse because it isn't a high-status neighborhood. We don't have this protection. Now, almost 20 years ago, the neighborhood did consider going under CHAP, but the majority of the neighborhood felt that the book of regulations was so long, and they were afraid that they wouldn't be able to afford their home improvements. You know, a lot of people in the neighborhood are on fixed incomes, so this new program, which would allow the neighborhood to come together with CHAP and just outline some basic things they feel strongly about, would be so effective, and also, the opportunity for the tax credit would be really welcomed. So, I really hope that you vote yes on this.
Thank you. Is there Nicholas Batas or Bartas? Nope. Okay. Is there a Mr. or Mrs. Massey from Wyndhurst? Is there any other public testimony before we move forward with the vote? Anyone online? Right now, if you're online and present in the virtual environment, you have the option to provide public testimony. You can show us that you want to testify by using a raise hand function. We see no raise hand function. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to move the bill favorably.
To move?
Moved by Ramos, is there a second? Seconded by Jones. I can do a roll call. All right, we're now doing a roll call.
Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance says aye. Ms. Ramos?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Aye, and I'd like to explain my vote.
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as, I appreciate the Finance Department's analysis, and I think it's an important conversation to be had about how the tax credits are being distributed across the city, and it's pretty well-known that it's been pretty largely concentrated across the tax credits in the L, and probably in a lot of situations where they may not have been needed otherwise. And I think what's actually really great about this bill specifically, is that it's allowing the flexibility, as we heard in the testimony earlier, to have this investment in the neighborhoods that have not been having a lot of this investment, right? So, it's most likely, the impact that we're going to be seeing, I anticipate, is going to be more of the investment that we wouldn't be getting otherwise, right? In the neighborhoods that wouldn't have had the recourse otherwise. So, I vote yes, and I think that the, while I'm very sensitive towards the tax credit consideration, conversation in general, I think in this particular situation, I'm going to have less an impact than we may be concerned about. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Passes forward with one absent.
Thank you. With that being said, the bill has passed for favorable amendments. It will go on to Secorito on May 24th, excuse me, Lord Jesus, I'm scared of May, March 24th, for the full council. Thank you, guys. We will take a four-minute recess, and then we will proceed with the next bill hearing. All right, guys, what do we get next? The next committee hearing will hear Bill 25003 R, informational hearing permit reforms, for the purpose of inviting representatives of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Office of the City Administrator, the Baltimore City Fire Department, and the Office of the Fire Marshal, and other relevant parties to provide informational reforms to the Department of Housing and Community Development's permits process. With that being said, we will follow in this order, which will be the Chair's opening remarks, followed by the council presidents, and then the bill sponsor, and then after that, we will then go into agency reports from the agency. The agencies will have a total of 20 minutes total to go through their bill reports, then we'll start with opening questions from the council president, followed by myself, then Councilwoman Ramos, and then open up to the entire committee, and then after that, we will do public testimony. Everyone's good? Perfect, I love efficiency. I want to thank Vice Chair, Councilmember Ramos, for introducing the resolution that reforms the basis of our hearing today, for working so hard to prepare the committee for this hearing. I also want to thank Council President Cohen for his leadership on this issue as well. The most basic thing our constituents expect us to is deliver a government that works for all of them. Efficiency is a must. In too many cases, our old permitting system made it too hard for people to get permits, even for the simplest things. While I know that there are and have been so many challenges with a rollout of the new e-permit system, I'm hopeful that it will deliver the greater efficiencies, ease of access, improved user experiences, process simplifications, and faster timelines that the Department of Housing and Community Development can deliver. These are the precise improvements our residents and our development community need. That said, the next step should be that the department, for the department to spell out our specific service improvements using quantifiable metrics this system will provide. As I understand, the Excela system is a database. It should therefore be easy for the city to report to us frequently how often and how long it takes to issue permits, so we can have access to system improvements and processes that eliminate bottlenecks. Let me also be clear that the permitting is just one step, an important step, but just one step in the continuum from project to start to deliver, to delivery, and a project must complete every step before it can be up and running and benefiting the community as a whole and the city as a whole. As such, I applaud Mayor Scott for announcing the new Be More Fast initiative. This effort is intended to link the many agencies' programs and have some role in governing the redevelopment process in Baltimore, and to focus them on the critical objective of advancing our city's economic development by making it easier to build and rebuild Baltimore with a customer focus. This new initiative, which comes to the city as is working to address the glut of the vacant property crisis that we have, is aimed at improving all facets of development and approval processes. As someone who represents the second-most vacant properties in the city of Baltimore, this is an efficiency that is needed for my neighbors, especially my neighbors in west Baltimore, who want to see vibrant communities that our young people can walk by and see that homes that esteem them, neighborhoods that esteem them, with amenities that esteem them, with investments that esteem them. The disinvestment that we've had since redlining and the subsequent federal policies that impacted my neighbors in west Baltimore, to the subsequent economic disenfranchisement that banks have had on my neighbors, this is the right time to do improvements for everyone in the city of Baltimore. I am pleased that we are joined today by both Deputy Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Justin Williams, and by Commissioner Alice Kennedy, as well as the Chief, Fire Chief Wallace, and other senior leaders. Before we hear from them, I want to recognize Council President Cohen, and then hear from Councilwoman Ramos. With that being said, I thank you all for being here today.
Thank you, Chairman Torrance, and I want to thank Chair Torrance for convening today's hearing, and also thank Councilmember Ramos for her leadership on permitting reform. For our city to thrive, Baltimore must become a great place to build and do business. Our nation is in the midst of a staggering housing crisis. Living in a big city has become unaffordable to too many Americans, and yet, Baltimore has the potential to both regrow our population and retain the legacy residents who stayed here through thick and thin. To reach our renaissance and provide the world-class city services our residents deserve, we must grow. And to grow, we must simplify the development process, eliminate inefficiencies, and make obtaining a permit a manageable task for a small business owner who can't afford to hire a lawyer or a lobbyist. The process must be predictable, responsive, and easy to navigate. We cannot control the chaos coming out of Washington, but we can prove at the local level, here in Baltimore, that we can cut through the red tape and deliver for the people we serve. That is why I'm grateful to Mayor Scott and Deputy Mayor Williams for their collaboration with the council on this important issue. Our inefficient permitting system has real-world consequences. A prime example is a local developer who told us they faced a staggering 13-month wait for a permit. They stated that while they were waiting, they had to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars out of pocket for fire watch, meaning contractors to patrol their building on evenings and weekends in case any fire broke out. This is just one stunning example of how delays in the permitting process can slow the growth of our city and deter investment. A regular Baltimorean looking to invest in their neighborhood could not shoulder such staggering costs. Last week, like Councilmember Torrance said, Mayor Scott introduced his new Be More Fast Plan, which offers dozens of recommendations to modernize our development approval process. This comprehensive initiative follows the introduction by the Department of Housing and Community Development of a brand-new e-permit system using technology that is widely deployed in jurisdictions throughout our region. I applaud Mayor Scott for his leadership. I am hopeful that these are the first steps in a revolution that will make Baltimore a premier destination for investment, but I also know that the Be More Fast initiative will rightfully be measured by how fast it lives up to its name. Put simply, Baltimore needs results. As such, today's hearing is the first step in what will be a sustained city council oversight process focused on one goal, making it easier to build in Baltimore. I appreciate Councilmember Ramos and Chairman Torrance for making it happen. I'll say where I see the most urgent need for improvement is in the Fire Department. I have long argued that when it comes to putting out fires, Baltimore has the best department in the country, but plans reviews and inspections for permits have proven cumbersome. The department needs more personnel dedicated to plans review and inspections, and these personnel are needed now. We will work in partnership with Chief Wallace and the department to add to their workforce. Additionally, last year, the council tried to help ease the strain by creating a third-party inspections process, but it does not appear that this new program is being implemented effectively yet. It is not an overstatement to say that Baltimore's future depends on our ability to create a development process that is efficient, fair, and accessible to all, and that prioritizes rather than prevents investment. And if we get this right, we won't just have a system that works better, we'll have what we all want, a city that grows stronger. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would now recognize Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You'll have to excuse me, I can't see over this thing. Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. Thank you so much for making time for this hearing. Thank you to all of our agency heads who are here. This shows that this is an extremely, extremely, extremely important issue. One of the factors that will successfully lead us towards our goal of removing vacant and abandoned properties through rehab or demolition is an efficient and effective permit office that will process applications, conduct inspections, and issue permits in a timely manner for homeowners, community development organizations, small developers, developers, and small businesses. Also, in the interest of expanding our Main Street corridors, we need a permit office that can meet the challenging demands. Contractors, homeowners, and small businesses across the city have reported their difficulties with the permit office, including not timely processing, approval of plans, scheduling inspections, and treatment by inspectors, and more. Some contractors refuse to do business here in the city, or they are charging more to do business here in the city, because how difficult it is to work with the permit office. In addition, we see a very sharp increase in work being done without permits. Contractors are avoiding the permit office and the permit process, and may end up doing less-than-standard work in our communities. Businesses along our Main Street corridors are also having difficulty navigating the process when told one thing by DHCD and another thing by the Fire Marshal. We've also had examples of building plans being approved and inspections failing because the plans did not, should not have been approved in general. So, I'm very excited about the opportunity to have this hearing today. I acknowledge that DHCD has done a tremendous amount of work to create a new portal with the new technology that was announced about a month ago, and so today's hearing is really going to be about how that's going, but also, the Be More Fast process that the Mayor's Office has announced, which would really look at all of the various development processes, from right-of-way, DPW, the zoning, all of the processes related to permits would also be included under the umbrella. Two or more years ago, I think it was maybe more, I asked very specifically about an in, what I called, an in-out, top-down, front-back, forward-backward assessment of the permit office and the options for reform, and so I'm hoping that we hear a little bit more about what that assessment actually brought to bear, and it's not just a technological solution, because I don't believe it is only a technological solution to resolve the problems that have come up with the permit office. I'm looking forward to the dialogue. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I will now recognize Council President for opening questions.
Thank you again.
Apologies, I forgot to allow the agency to have their actual presentation. Apologies, Deputy Mayor.
Okay.
Just want to give you guys the opportunity to, 20 minutes total, Tony, if we can put up the clock, so...
Do we have the presentation?
You have the presentation?
We do. I'm not sure where it... I haven't thought about how to look.
You haven't given it to Tony?
Did somebody forward the slide?
Do we need to...
If someone can forward to Tony.
The slides were submitted to the committee. They are typically on the screen. I submitted them yesterday.
Those are...
To Tony.
Your slides are exactly from the council lunch, is what we're asking.
No, they're not, so...
This is specific to, let me see, hold on, let me second. Okay, give me one second.
This is the presentation?
One second, I'm seeing which one this is. Yeah, it's the one I sent on three on yesterday. I forward you the email, yeah.
That, it's just, it's totaled from the council, slides from the council, sorry. So, got my...
I sent, not this one, there's one specific for this hearing on permit reforms that I sent, I just re-forwarded that email to you. I sent it to you, I see that.
Perfect, we now have the slides. Your 20 minutes begins now.
Thank you, I guess are you controlling up there? Or I can, well, whatever's easier.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chair, or Mr. President, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, and members of the council. For the record, Justin Williams, I'm the Deputy Mayor for Community and Economic Development. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss the critical work we're undertaking to reform Baltimore's permitting and development processes. Great. As you've all mentioned, we all understand the challenges Baltimore faces today. Our housing market isn't meeting the needs of too many of our residents. Our commercial corridors, the backbone of our neighborhood economies, the Main Streets that Councilwoman Ramos mentioned, aren't reaching their potential. But here's the thing, we have a historic $3 billion plan to address vacant properties across our city. This is an unprecedented opportunity for Baltimore and to transform Baltimore, but money alone is not enough. Now, more than ever, we need a permitting process that works for everyone, a process that's accessible to all of our residents and businesses, not just those who can afford specialized help, a process that's efficient, because time is money, and wasted time means wasted opportunity, and yes, a process that's accountable to the people of the city who deserve to see their government working effectively on their behalf. Since I became Deputy Mayor, we've been working to improve our development processes. We've launched a permits stat to create data-driven accountability. DHCD will talk about how they've raised call-answer rates in their permits office from less than 10% to above 98%. We've begun modernizing technology systems that were failing our citizens, but the Mayor's been clear, we need to do more. That's why... That's why Mayor Scott has directed us to formalize and expand these efforts under the Be More Fast, facilitating approvals and student-lending timelines banner. As many of you know, I spent years as a land use attorney, helping clients navigate Baltimore's development maze. As many of you know, I spent years as a land use attorney, helping clients navigate Baltimore's development maze. And you know what I discovered? Much of my work was not legal at all. It was spending countless hours navigating bureaucracy. It was understanding how to phrase a narrative on a permit so it would go through more quickly. It was knowing which staff person to call when something got stuck between departments. And that experience taught me something profound. The permit process is one of those few areas, as Council President mentioned, where we can control as a city. We can't control interest rates, we can't control construction costs, we can't control global supply chain or capital markets. But we can absolutely control how our own government operates. So as part of the Be More Fast initiative, we're establishing two cornerstone initiatives to drive this transformation. First, we're creating a Director of Permitting and Development Services position, been colloquially referred to as a permit czar, with direct authority to coordinate across agencies, eliminate bottlenecks, and ensure accountability. You look at our current system, as has been noted by others. We have permitting and development approvals fragmented across multiple departments, each with different leadership, different priorities, different reporting structures. DHCD handles building permits, fire reviews, plans for life safety. Public Works handles stormwater management approvals, transportation overseas, right-of-way issues, planning reviews, design, forestry sustainability requirements, the list goes on. And when each department answers to different supervisors and has different core missions, where public safety or environmental protection take priority over development facilitation, the result is what we have, a fractured process that no one owns from start to finish. So with no more passing the buck, no more saying, "That's not my department." There'll be one person with one authority to get things done. Second, we're establishing the Be More Fast advisory group. Bringing together developers, contractors, architects, lenders, community development experts, and small business representatives to provide ongoing guidance. Because government doesn't have all the answers, and we need to listen to the people doing this work every day. Our comprehensive approach organizes dozens of recommendations around four stakeholder groups. I know we've discussed this yesterday in the council lunch, so I won't go into specifics for time. I'll just focus again, like on city operations, for example, we're strengthening our institutional capacity through better staffing, improved processes, and centralized leadership, because government needs to work better. Our vision is in small. We aim to make Baltimore the best city in America to undertake development. When our processes work efficiently, we create more housing options across all market segments, more vibrant commercial corridors, more jobs, and ultimately stronger neighborhoods. That's the change we believe in and look forward to working with the council to make this happen, as that's the transformation that Baltimore deserves. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Kennedy to discuss the specifics of DHCD's work, followed by Chief Wallace, who will detail the fire department's reforms. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Council President, Alice Kennedy, Housing Commissioner. Overall, in terms of where we are right now, so as you know, DHCD coordinates the building permitting process through the ePermit System. The new ePermit System launched on February 3rd. Want to once again, you know, kind of emphasize here that this is why the position of the Director of Permitting and Development Services that Deputy Mayor Williams mentioned as part of Be More Fast is so important. Because DHCD is the hub, and there are many spokes associated with that hub, and we need that centralized coordination to help move those along. And DHCD focuses on kind of initial plans reviews as well as some of the licensed trades. Overall, just as a grounding reminder in terms of the number of permits specifically that we issue on a yearly basis, this has increased 7.4% from 2021 to 2024, with 2024 having, the city has issued just under 40,000 permits at 39,943 permits across use categories from construction, use and occupancy, demolition, as well as temporary use. The majority of those times for the construction permits, which are one of the most common permits, majority of those permits are processed in zero and were processed since 2021 through 2024, between zero to 10 days, with a number of them picking up at 11 to 20 days. And then you had some at 91 and more days in terms of what that would look like. When we look at the data in terms of days to process that are over the 11 days, you'd get a significant number in that 11 to 20, and then, you know, smaller numbers in that 91 and above. Some of the key items here, you know, we do believe that ACELA is going to help with some of this timing. We also believe that a number of the reforms and projects and programs that are in place and have been working and that Deputy Mayor Williams and Mayor Scott have announced with Be More Fast, is that more comprehensive, that it's not just the software, but it's the other components that are necessary to move the permits through, and those are picked up in those initiatives and moving forward from there. You know, we replaced the prior ePermitting system. This was a system that was built with unique code. We could not keep pace with the demand, and I've likened that system to being held together by duct tape and prayers with a prayer that it did not have a catastrophic failure while we were in the process of moving things to a new system. We've actually heard a lot from our persons that utilize the system. We've heard that the new system, we've had people able to apply for permits, process, get the permits. Everything moves smoothly. We've heard, "Why'd you change the old system? It was great." So in this system, you know, and there were a lot of developers and a lot of people that were perfectly happy with the way the old system worked. It functioned, they were able to move things through. But we recognize that, you know, for efficiency and being able to also have the backend efficiency on the staff side and have better user interface and reporting capabilities, which data and reporting is extremely important to DHCD, that that was extremely important. Also, so, you know, launching on February 3rd, we've had a significant number of external trainings, which we shared all of the training information with the council members through several opportunities through email to highlight when these training opportunities were, as well as different information on both for the council offices as well as the public to have. We have a permits, like a pro site, that has all of the information and all the job aids. We're going to be adding some, and those are mostly just the PDFs with the very specific click here, go here screenshot. We're going to be adding and producing some 30-second videos to help people move through this as well. And we have those 20-step items. So Phase 1, this is what's in progress. We're making this work. It has some of that improved customer relations. You get some of that more, you know, auto-generated permits. There's the web-based services for scheduling inspections. We are looking at reducing permit application cycle time. Phase 2 of this entire process, where actually is, Phase 2 of the ACELA implementation is actually moving our code enforcement system, otherwise known as CHIP, to the ACELA platform as well, so that everything is cohesive and creates additional efficiencies as we look at our code enforcement work as relates to permits, as well as future phases, include the continued integration of agency processes as well as the fire inspection scheduling and so forth. For the permit phone office line, this was actually completed. This is an item noted in Be More Fast as an effort. We worked with BSIT on this, as well as website improvements as well. This is an overview of some of that dedicated permit line, and I'm going to actually ask Chief of Staff Lehman from BSIT just to talk a little bit about the call center that was put in place.
Good evening, Council President, Council Chair. So wanted to share with you, it's been, as you can see, it's been in operation for about a year. And we started that effort under the mayor's direction back in December 2023, working with DHCD to, their line was not actually set up like a call center. So didn't have queues, it had voicemail, there were opportunities to improve the IVR. So we worked with them on that. And as you can see, almost immediately, the answer rates vastly improved. You know, and it is a partnership. They still have the ability to answer the phone and do assist with that still. And so, as you can see throughout the months, our answer rates are higher. Our goal is actually 90%, which is consistent with our answer rate goals for 311 as well. But you can see most months we've exceeded that. February, obviously, with the implementation of the new system, we were hit pretty hard. Particularly the average between the call volume as well as the average handle time, it really definitely impacted our ability to answer the phones. But we did pivot quickly. So we worked with DHCD on a regular basis, monitoring different ways that we could help address the problem. So for instance, one way we did that was we stood up within about a week, the, an IVR feature to specifically address what was known as the PIN issue. It was something that we could quickly train our staff on. We pulled a couple of staff to do that, and were able to then quickly resolve PIN issues so that they weren't caught in a waiting queue. We also changed the messaging so that people could go to the job aids, because a lot of the questions we were getting really could be answered by job aids, so getting them to those. We changed the after-hours message as well to guide people to those for when they couldn't be available. We also added staff. And so we did that around mid-month. And since mid-month, we've been able to see a stabilization in our answer rate net. And for March, actually, for the first week, our answer rate's at 94%.
Outside of updating the call center, one of the key components of why for DHCD, as well as Mayor Scott, Deputy Mayor Williams, and the entire team of moving to a different platform is also our reporting capabilities. So we have been, and went through a process that looked at different dashboards from around different countries. And BSIT is taking the lead on working with us on creation of the publicly facing dashboard.
Sure. So we've looked at a multitude of cities, including San Diego, Portland, Austin, just to name a few. The intention will be, this is a rendering, and the intention will be that this will be publicly available as well as updated daily, so that anyone who would like to see the key metrics can do so at any time.
And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Wallace in the fire department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Council President, members of the committee. My name is James Wallace. I'm chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department. I'll add that I'm joined here today by our Fire Marshal, Deputy Chief Ron Hudgens, Commander Sean Eames from Plans Review, and Captain Dennis Dawson from Inspections. So just a quick brief on where we are as a fire department. Amongst many other services, the department does supply permit inspection and prevention services to the city of Baltimore and its residents. The department reviews construction plans and also inspects as-built structures to ensure compliance with health and safety requirements. Within that space, if you will, they review building plans. In doing so, these are fire safety reviews. Examples of such are listed on the slide, but do include inspections of means of egress, party walls, firewalls, and separations. And as an example, I would draw your attention to a fire about a month ago down on Peninsula Drive. Great example of a building under construction. We had done a lot of review work down there. A lot of good prevention work was done, and that can be directly attributed to the fact that that building is still standing. In addition to those inspections, they do fire alarm and fire suppression systems. As such, alarms and sprinklers, they do require their own permits. That is separate from general construction permits. So these are more of a standalone process in addition to what we know as general construction. And then UNO, or use and occupancy permits. Oftentimes, we conduct these during a time when a property is changing its use type and may be subjected to new use standards. So where are we going at this point? We had one individual in fire plans review, but we also had three inspectors that were trained to review fire plans as well. So these were members of the Fire Marshal's office that would move back and forth between inspections and plans reviews. So what I've done is, we are reclassifying, if you will, positions that already exist in the fire department, uniform positions. They are being reclassed at this time, it's in the process, to civilian plans reviewers. We've also hired one part-time, and we've already seen an increase in service capability just with the part-time hire. So, you know, the assumption is with the three additional plans reviewers, right? They're the ones, they're the first domino in the process with the plans reviewers. We expect that process will, the speed of that process will move up much more. In addition, the Council President spoke about third-party plans reviews. So that process was being used for larger buildings. I'm told we had four opportunities to conduct those. Where I'm going with the department is, I want to flip that. I want that to actually be used for smaller projects, some of the more common day-to-day projects that we get. You know, no less in significance, but lesser in time, if you will. That's where we're finding a lot of the application, a lot of need from the Fire Marshal's office, are these smaller projects that we get. Examples of such are just kitchen hood-type work in restaurants, as well as when there's occupancy changes where there may be a need to be an addition, or in some cases, a reduction of sprinkler heads in the buildings itself. And we believe that these smaller projects that we, although they're large in number, we believe if we move to a system where we're using third-party for those, that that can absorb upwards of 25% of the work. What I will say is, I think that number is a little bit conservative. I think as we continue to see more plans, as the city begins to develop, I think the third-party aspect of that will actually absorb more of that work. Naturally, what we want to do is retain final say on those, right? There needs to be oversight on that. But we do believe that that third-party initiative will help us out there. And then, you know, as I have in the slide, explore expedited third-party review for larger projects as well. But we want to focus on those lower ones. We want to get those that are in numbers right now. And then we'll continue to model the program. Based on, you know, any successes that we have, we're going to continue to model and, you know, change and revive that moving forward.
Perfect. 17 minutes. Perfect. I like efficiency. So I'm going to turn it over to Council President Cohen for his opening questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and all the folks who have joined us today. Chief Wallace, as I said earlier, I believe we have the best firefighting department in the country. The women and men of this department do an extraordinary job putting out fires. That said, the number-one concern I hear about the development process in the city is about excessive delays in plans review and inspections conducted by the fire department. Improving that bottleneck would yield immediate results. So in my time, I want to ask you for commitments on two things that should begin to help improve the process, both of which you've already alluded to. Specifically, I am asking for commitments on getting more people in your permitting shop and using third parties to review plans. Chief, it is my understanding that, as you said today, you have four folks. My first question is, how does that compare to surrounding jurisdictions, if you have any idea?
Well, I don't have the exact numbers, but having worked in several other places, they have six people or six to eight people doing plans. We have four people doing inspections and plans. So we are way short.
So we are extremely short?
Yes.
Great. Chief Wallace, I understand that you recently requested to reclassify, and you mentioned in your presentation, three pins from elsewhere in the fire department to create more conditions to conduct plan review. Is that right? And by what date do you anticipate these reclassifications to be fully done?
Yes, sir, and thank you for that. Answer to your first question is yes, that is correct. I can't give you an exact time on that. These positions are, we're four or five weeks into the reclassification process. I know that it has moved along. As soon as we get the pins, we've also front-loaded the job descriptions as well as the pay ranges, if you will. Keeping in mind, we're reducing sworn positions to civilian positions, so that runs through the city's reclass position. And I'm specifically doing that for a couple reasons. One, I need to keep my sworn staff in the field, right? We know the department overall is understaffed. I need to keep that staff in the field, the field for this particular service. The field for this particular service means boots-on-the-ground inspectors in the fields, the ones that our citizens see on a day-to-day basis. The second reason is I believe that we can reach either our younger workforce that's just emerging from college with a degree in either fire science, fire protection. But I also believe I can reach that part of the workforce that has retired from other jurisdictions. So they bring that institutional knowledge to the city of Baltimore. So yes to your first question. I'm hoping it's going to be very soon with the reclass for the second question, and then supporting explanations why.
Deputy Mayor, when will those positions be fully reclassified?
I am not controlling, and I guess now I'm the permit, been named permit czar, been leading the initiative. I guess I have not had the experience with the reclass process. It's something, it's like another government process I look forward to leaning into, I'm going to be helpful for, but I can't, I guess, forecast.
I can, I can.
Yeah.
Oh, I can, I can. I can help the deputy mayor out on that one. So the requests were initiated by the Fire Department last, within the last week. Those items have been approved up through the Budget Office and have made their way over to the Department of Human Resources for review. Those would be reviewed by the Expenditure Control Committee, likely at the April meeting, and then moved on to the Board of Estimates, either at the second, either the second BOE of April or the first BOE of May.
So by mid-May, these positions will be fully reclassified?
That's correct. And it sounds like, based off of what Chief Wallace has shared, is that his team has done the pre-work so that once the formal reclassification process has taken place, they could get it into recruitment as soon as possible.
Understood. So we're looking at, is there, do you know when that second BOE is in May?
So it would either be the second BOE of April or the first BOE of May. I believe the first BOE of May, I want to say is May the 7th. That's correct, May the 7th. Again, that's the traditional path that those items, that these requests would follow. I think, you know, in light of the urgency that is being discussed here, there are opportunities that DHR can pursue to, you know, bring the items to the Board of Estimates sooner. And so provided all of the materials meet the requirements of reclassifying the position, we could look at potentially, like convening an emergency meeting of the ECC to be able to bring it to the board sooner.
So, great. Just so I'm clear, Mr. Permit Czar, Madam Director, and Mr. Chief, by May 7th, those three positions will be, those positions will be reclassified. Is that correct?
That's my understanding right now. I mean, they are with the Department of Human Resources, so barring any sort of major unexpected issue with the materials that were submitted, yes, the very latest date would be Wednesday, May the 7th.
Chief, that tracks for you?
Sir, that's my understanding as well.
How many additional personnel do you need who can conduct inspections to be able to adequately meet your department's current workload?
We're actually evaluating that now. I'm working very closely with Mayor Scott's administration to evaluate that, evaluate what I have to work with now and what I may need in the future. I think that's why we really are really favoring as a quicker solution or more of a immediate-to-midterm solution, that third-party resolution that I previously mentioned.
Understood. Can you, though, give us a number in your conception? I understand where the piece about third-party would clearly change the math, but to be fully up and running, what does it look like?
So I just recently fully staffed that office, the permits, the permits team, if you will, understanding that the Fire Marshal's Office is broken into three pieces, cause determination, which are field investigators, permits and inspections, boots-on-the-ground, and then plans reviewers. Having just filled the permits and inspections, arson is full as well, and now on our way there, I need a little bit of time to reevaluate that. I need to evaluate the service, where we're effective with adding the three, and where we can be effective with adding an additional three more into plans review.
So will you be seeking funding in this year's budget for those positions?
My budget submission is in. I did not seek funding for it. However, I also did not seek funding for the plans reviewers that I've referenced here along the way, the three. I did that by way of reclasses.
Okay. I'm going to make a committee request, Mr. Chair. If we could, within two weeks, Chief Wallace, I would appreciate if you would report back to this committee on the ideal number that you would need to fill those shops. Is that all right, Mr. Chair?
And what specific shop, Mr. President, so I can make sure I capture it correctly, too?
So this is for inspections, this is for, Chief, could you break down the three that you had mentioned?
Yes, sir. The first service is cause determination, so those are fire investigators. The second service is prevention and inspection. They're the boots-on-the-ground field force. The third service is plans and permit review.
Got it. Perfect. Tony from the committee has also captured it as well.
Great. Chief, is two weeks an adequate amount of time for you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And just confirming, we are agreeing to March 25th?
That is what it looks like in my book.
Just want to make sure it is a clear date.
Thank you, sir. So, and Chief, if you could, in that report back, if you could say how those PINs are going to be added, whether it's through the third-party, whether it's through budget mods, I just want to be clear that we're actually moving in that direction. So I do want to go to the third-party review. Chief, the last, in the last year, the council enacted legislation enabling third-party review, as you said, for large, complex projects. But I've heard from the development community that they don't really know anything about the third-party review system or about the law we enacted. Chief, has the Fire Department begun implementing a third-party review? If so, how does it work and who can participate?
So we implemented the third-party review when we adopted the 2024 Baltimore City and Building and Fire-related codes. Thus far, we've only had four projects that meet that threshold to actually need that third-party. What they have to do is just contract with outside, then their architect or engineer to review the plans. They would submit their plans to us for final take. I do have a success. We had a large project, which is a large manufacturing firm. That whole plan review process went through in about eight hours of my time looking at it, where it could have been 40 or 50 hours. So thus far, we've only had four projects that actually use that avenue.
Commander Eames, I appreciate that. I will note that I was in a conversation with a large group of developers, and zero of them had heard of that. So I think there's a communications gap somewhere along the chain. Has the department produced any public information about the third-party review option or conducted any type of training with the building community, development community?
So we participate with planning and Director Tisso. We have meetings with all new projects. So in those meetings, if the project would qualify for third-party, we would let them know as well. We have meetings with myself and members of the HCD, Tuesdays and Thursdays. We had three meetings every week. We let all the projects know, I mean, that this option.
The challenge that I'm having is that it seems that folks in the development community don't know anything about it. And so can I make a suggestion or request that we do some kind of communications campaign to make sure folks understand that that option exists?
Yes, sir.
Can I clarify the point? Feel free to correct me, Commander. So the third-party review that's been provided for currently in the code through the Building and Fire-related codes update had a provision that mandated a third-party review for certain large projects. The issue, and speaking colloquially, like, they would get plans that were for big buildings that were all over the place, people who weren't from this jurisdiction, or maybe didn't do plans that were good or up to the normal level. And it would, like I said, Commander Ames, it'd take 40, 50 hours of their time to review. And so the reason for the third-party that they established in the code then was to ensure there'd be some level of quality before it gets to them, just so they wouldn't do so much work to, like, triage and just fix things. Separately, the thing that was mentioned in Chief Wallace's presentation, a third-party review would be more of kind of what I think you're thinking of traditionally of, like, allowing a third-party to sign off and do plans on their own.
Correct.
That would be allowed. And then we would still ask the Fire Department to do inspections, but that would be the process. And so that will be stood up in the next, you know, going forward, we're looking forward to doing that together. But that's separate from what the existing process is.
Deputy Mayor, when would that be stood up by?
I am not prepared to commit to a specific date. I'm looking forward to working and rolling this out. And it's very important to me. I know it's a huge bottleneck. I mean, not just you and your meetings with the development community. I've heard the same complaints and looking forward to trying to get it up as soon as possible.
Deputy Mayor, could you report back to this committee within two weeks? That's also March 15th, about a date certain, I'm sorry, 25th, about a date certain to be able to launch the third-party piece?
Yes.
Thank you. And sort of on that same line, how does, how do we, Deputy Mayor or Chief, how does the department ensure that these third-party reviewers are qualified to perform such reviews? Because we would not want folks cheating the system or beating, trying to beat the system. It is incredibly important that if we move in this direction, that the review remain as rigorous and serious and that it not just be a low-quality shop that's doing it.
And this is part of the reason, Fire also weighed in, but that's part of the reason I wasn't prepared to commit to a date, because this is an area where I wanted to make sure we do thorough research and look at best practices to ensure there's safety and that we do the right thing, because I recognize, and I think it's been brought up in conversations, that there's ample opportunity for unscrupulous plans, prepare us to skirt the law, and that's something we don't want to do here. We want to make sure this is hoping more fast about being efficient, predictable, but also not jeopardizing, you know, public health, safety, and welfare. And so I know there's definitely thoughts, and I know Commander Eames had mentioned his experience in other jurisdictions about what's gone right and what's gone wrong, but that's something like I intend to review and ensure we do it the right way.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Commander Eames?
So typically, when people do third-party, they have to be a fire protection engineer licensed in that particular jurisdiction. That's typically the goal that they need to have.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
They need to be a fire protection engineer.
Okay.
So they would be licensed by, I was, I formally served as the consumer member on the Board of Licensed Professional Engineers, and I've seen a wild varying quality of PEs in my time there and people who were sanctioned. So, I mean, I think there should be, would definitely be a level of quality by having a licensed fire protection engineer, but my vision is to ensure we have an audit system in place and that we have a way to ensure that the actual ones doing third-party review work are quality fire protection engineers.
Excellent. Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Chief. Let me just nail down commitments at this hearing so far. So Chief, you had said the three new PINs, and thank you, Director Larson, for clarifying, will be reclassified by May 7th at the latest. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you. The inclusion of funding and determining how many new PINs you would need to fully staff up that shop, you will report back to us within two weeks for that number, is that correct?
25th of March, correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. And the issuance of third-party reviews determining when that will, Deputy Mayor, will be fully up and running, you will return back to this committee within two weeks, also March 25th. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Director Larson. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one last thing. I think we were asked, I think you also asked for a campaign in terms of informing persons about the process. I just want to make sure, I think we were supposed to reflect that in the record, too.
But I want to, I think I do want to note that for the committee request, that like, that might cost money. Like, we need to look into what that would consist of, with like this whole communications plan. You want to do it strategically. I don't want a committee request that possibly has a financial implication that we may not be, I'm just saying, like, give us the opportunity to follow up with the agency and determine what that could look like and if there is a cause, and that the agency has the funding to do that. I think that this is something that we would want to do comprehensively, Mr. President, in making sure that when we do report out or have the communication to the development community, that it is comprehensive, right? And that we're doing it in a way that we are, you know, targeting, for lack of a better term, right, like, the people who do that work and who will benefit from that information. So we'll certainly follow up with Chief Wallace, and I forget the name of your new PIO, but we'll certainly follow up with them about the communications plan and be able to get back to you on what that could look like, Mr. President.
I appreciate that. I just want to be clear, though. The commitment from the administration is two weeks for determining when the third-party review plan would launch, and two weeks for determining how much Chief would need to fully staff his office. That is not a financial commitment by the administration, but it is an understanding for this council of what it would look like to fully staff the office. And May 7th was the date by which we would fully see those positions reclassed.
Yes, I wasn't talking about that. I was talking about the communications plan.
Understood. Thanks again, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next is my questions. Commissioner Kennedy, thank you for being here today. There are two topics I want to focus on. The first is discussing performance metrics. The second will also be more so about integrity checks. As for performance metrics, first, let's talk about the metrics. A year ago, the DCHD had town halls. In those town halls, DCHD promised, and I quote, "The new Excela system will be more user-friendly, reduce wait times, and improve communication between permitting and inspections." Commissioner Kennedy, can you quantify the wait-time reductions that the new permit system intends to have, and how will we produce those?
Mr. Chair, that's a great question. At this time, we cannot quantify the wait-time, the change in time. There are a couple of different pieces to that, is that the system, as the councilman talked about, and that we have mentioned before, that the system itself will have an impact, but a lot of the work that's happening under Be More Fast will also have an impact in terms of the length of time for permits to be reviewed and issued as well. We do know that there are efficiencies that are already being, that are already being realized because our inspectors are in the field. They can actually access the permit in the field on their mobile device. They can take the photographs in the field. They can upload them to the field. They can improve the inspection in the field instead of being in the field, using a old-fashioned digital camera, taking, taking photographs, taking that camera back to the office, sitting down, plugging that camera in with an old-fashioned USB port cable, uploading each folder, and then dragging and dropping each picture for each inspection. So that time, exact time, has not yet been quantified, but it is a key item that we are looking at to be able to quantify the time savings and the efficiencies that we are realizing with the new system itself. And then there'll be additional quantification as we continue to implement the items within Be More Fast.
Thank you, Commissioner. I feel like I'm still dealing with MySpace then, if we got to plug into.
It's essentially, it is essentially going from MySpace to whatever the new thing is now, you know? I don't, you know, I have to ask my 15-year-old daughter what the new thing is as of today. I'm not sure. I don't, you know, I have to ask my fifteen-year-old daughter what the new thing is as of today. I'm not sure.
I think the city administrators are.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Chairperson Torrance, a member of the committee. I wanted to come and correct the record on some committee requests that came up previously so that I can be clear about what the administration is committing to. So I will walk through the requests as I heard them. And Mr. Council President, if there was a request that I missed, if you could please raise that request for me so that we can be clear about what the next steps are. So the first committee request that I heard was around, was around the campaign for third-party review. Is that, was that a request, a follow-up regarding the campaign around third-party reviews?
Yes, flexible on timeline on that one.
Yep. So the way I understood that dialogue, there was a bit of conflation on two different issues, right? So there is the third-party review that was mandated as a part of the fire code inspections that passed in 2024. And then there is the third-party review that is a part of Be More Fast where we would certify third-party reviewers to do plans reviews. Those are two separate items. And so I thought that the communications plan or the marketing plan was regarding the current process, not the proposed process. Is that accurate?
I would say whichever process is going to enable the development community writ large to utilize a third-party review, that is what I would like to see a good, strong communications plan for.
So what I would offer is that that would not be something that would be ready by March twenty-fifth or the date that was proposed, because that is the process that would be a part of Be More Fast that we are building out and developing. And so we would do a comprehensive rollout and communications plan as we roll out the third-party reviews that are relative to Be More Fast. The third-party reviews that are required, these are required as a part of the new building codes. I'm happy for us to do more outreach and to share information with the development community because it is a requirement now per the code. I just wanted to clarify those two because they're two different things.
Like I said, I'm flexible on timeline and I'm flexible on rollout. I just have noticed that I think there is, like you said, confusion and conflation within the community that would utilize this.
Got it. So we will commit to as a part of the rollout of third-party reviews that are a part of Be More Fast, that there will be a comprehensive communications plan included as a part of that rollout.
Great.
Okay, got it. So that was that request. The next, yes?
I just want, I like finite things. Could we have that by the budget hearings? That way the council's reviewing around that time, that gives the administration six months? No, sorry, three months. Sorry, my math is off today. Three months. At least give us some type of, at least a timeline and not just.
Oh, the timeline, yeah.
I think a timeline is fair, especially since you have to pay for it.
Absolutely. So here's what we will commit to. We can have the timeline and we will have kind of a sketch of what third-party reviews will look like going into the budget hearings. Is that? Okay, got it. So it won't be implemented, but we will be able to communicate to you about what possible third-party reviews could look like, what a pilot could look like.
Okay.
And a communication, and we won't have the communications plan, but we will build that out as a part of what we provide to you all at that time.
Okay.
Got it. Awesome. And the next item, I think, was on the Fire Marshal's Office staffing. Was a follow-up item. So on that, and I believe the Budget Director and the Fire Chief talked about the positions that were reclassified. They committed to a date. We will ensure that that gets to the Board of Estimates and we'll let you know if there are any changes with those items getting to the Board of Estimates. The additional staffing in the Fire Marshal's Office, so I think there are a couple of things here. I would want to do a full staffing assessment that also considers third-party reviews as well. So I would not want to just blindly say that we want, that we need ten additional staff in the Fire Marshal's Office without doing a full staffing assessment and then also thinking about the new efficiencies that we're putting in place, like third-party reviews, how that will impact the need for staffing. And so that is not a number that, I'm not sure the date, it was in the next two weeks, that I think is reasonable or feasible to do without doing an actual staffing assessment.
Well, I think it's important to understand what full capacity would look like. And I understand the piece about third-party and how that alters the plan. But I do think, I want to understand what a staffed-up Fire Marshal Department looks like in other places, what it could look like for, you know, I want to know what we're, what our North Star is here.
Got it. So it sounds, so we, what we, I can tell you what the current staffing and the staffing model is and we can even tell you the number of plans that are reviewed by each person in the office. How many? Thirty-one? So currently there's thirty-one budgeted. How many vacancies do we have? So Laura's going to pull up the vacancies, but currently we have.
Sorry, Madam Minister, thirty-one is the number of, like the full number.
All FTEs in the Fire Marshal's Office.
Okay.
Yes. And we're going to pull up the vacancies now. What, this is what we can commit to do around the staffing piece of this. So we can pull together peer jurisdictions. Now, the thing about the peer jurisdictions, and I think this might just require a follow-up meeting for us to dig into the data because the Fire Chief educated me about this, even with Baltimore County. You might see really large numbers, but that's because they have folks in suppression that are also certified on the Fire Marshal's side to do inspections. And so it's not necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison, but we will try to find like jurisdictions to compare their staffing to ours. We'll also provide you information on like the average, you know, plan reviews, for example, on our end. I may not have in that moment, this is, you know, the recommended staffing level at that time, but I can provide you inputs to what a full staffing assessment would be made of.
Okay.
Okay, got it. And then there was one more. Was it one more that I missed?
Yeah. Third-party reviews, the reclass of the new pins. So third-party reviews, reclass of the new pins, and then what a full staffing plan would look like. I think you said May seventh.
Yeah, so we will get you preliminary data on staffing on May seventh.
No, no.
I'm sorry.
What I'm asking, the reclass, when that full reclassification would go through?
Yes, the May seventh BOE is when we committed to on the reclass of the three, I think the three positions. So May seventh, we committed to that. And then in the next, in the few weeks, you can give me a date, we committed to providing inputs on staffing. So we can just share stat, data, data on staffing as it currently stands with the department as well as with some peer jurisdictions.
Tony, did I miss any? Okay, yeah. And Madam City Administrator, I appreciate it. I think the big piece here for me and for this council is clearly there needs to be increased staff in this department and there needs to be a option for third-party review. One that is rigorous, one that is high levels of scrutiny, that does not enable folks to in any way skirt the system. That those things are deeply urgent to move this process forward.
Absolutely. And just to close us out, there are thirty-one positions that are budgeted in the Fire Marshal's Office. There is currently one vacancy and then there are the three reclasses. And Chief Wallace, you recently did hires because we did have more vacancies than the one.
We recently promoted into three vacant positions for Fire Inspector, not permits. We keep talking about that number three. Fire Inspector, we permitted, or I'm sorry, we promoted and filled permits is where we're reclassing for three.
Got it.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I, I'll pick up kind of where we, yeah?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So one of the key things is that also in talking about KPIs and so forth, and I mentioned this in the opening remarks, is one of the reasons why a move of the system as well is to be able to track performance and have key performance metrics, being able to track performance, be able to, be able to dig in to see, okay, where are some barriers, what's holding up? Is there something happening weird in a certain section to be able to move that forward? So we have been working with BSIT. We will have, as we mentioned in the, in the opening remarks, a publicly available front, forward-facing, public-facing dashboard covering a number of different KPI metrics that we will monitor publicly. We also have the Permit Stat, which is mentioned as well in terms of the Be More Fast initiative on other kind of KPI and keep, KPI and monitoring. And as Chief of Staff Leland mentioned as well, we've done review of multiple different jurisdictions in terms of their publicly facing dashboards, what type of information, also what's important here from the agency and so forth. So very important to us. It's one of the reasons why the system is there. So it'll allow us to be able to kind of move and track and go from there as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy, and I just want to applaud you because just for the public consumption, we did ask in writing about the dashboard. You did provide a response. I'm thankful that you are consistent with what the response was today. But I have one simple question. When will the dashboard be made publicly available? I love a dashboard. I love a little tableau. I just want to make sure that we have a commitment on when that will be public. So the public as well as my staff or the Joe Blow citizen who emails my office thinking that their neighbor maybe don't work without a permit can actually look at it as well so that we're transparent and there are always three hundred and sixty-degree eyes on it.
So I can't make a commitment at this time for when it'll be available, but it is a priority for us at the agency, is a priority for Deputy Mayor Williams, CEO Leach and the administration in BSIT. One of the other items is that you can go in to the, anybody can access the E-Permits Portal and anyone, any public, member of the public can put in an address and search to see if there are permits to pick up on that one item that you mentioned about work without a permit.
Thank you. And I just want to say that while I hear that, I think that we do need some type of public commitment. I'll be frank, my staff a few days ago looked up a permit for someone on CodeMap and it goes directly to your dashboard. There was no training for staff as well as council offices. So that puts us and our constituents in a boondoggle. And I say that because then we have to email a permit czar to get a basic answer for yes or no if there's a pending permit. In addition to that, I have members of the public who say that their permits are stuck in permit purgatory, where they submitted a permit prior to the actual launch and they're just stuck in limbo. So I just want to make sure that we have a dashboard so we see what the current performance is while we can make, while we make sense of the things that we did not foresee in Go More Live.
Yeah, I mean, thanks for that, Councilman. I mean, we got to get it right, right? And so I think allowing the agency the time to develop it and then launch it when it, when it's ready. It's not in the place to be launched yet. So I think that that, that is the answer. It's when it is ready and once the agency has done testing and made sure that the information on the dashboard is accurate and up to date. And that's when we'll be able to communicate to you all when it launches.
Yeah.
No commitment will be made here today.
I will believe that the commitment was made, and again, Councilman Ramos, I believe it was made that we will have a new system in 2024 and now the system is now live in 2025. I, I just want to be frank and say that I need a commitment. So I will say that as a council, I would like to make a committee request that we have a dashboard live by the actual budget hearing for DCHD so that we know what the actual metrics are that DCHD is going to be tracking. I think that's a fair assumption if this council wants to receive the mayor's budget, wants to fund the agency as well.
Okay.
With that being said, Commissioner Kennedy, what metrics will be tracked by the new permanent data dashboard?
Some of those will be, you know, the days to process. I don't have the complete list of what we're putting on or thinking about, but we'd have days to process by permit type, you know, permit application, number of applications, total that we've received by permit type, where they are in the process in terms of being able to see where they're moving through. So there's lots of, many different possibilities that we've been looking at, but the key ones are days for processing depending upon permit, number of applications, number of, you know, use and occupancy permits are a big one for us as well as demolition permits as it relates to vacants. So there are, and the days of when, you know, the date of an application of a permit to, you know, date of completion as well. So what's really about digging in on the timeline and the timing and where permits are as well in terms of what agency. So you'd be able to be on the dashboard and know how many permits reviews are with Fire, how many are with DHD, how many are DPW planning, et cetera. So that's another key piece which helps us be able to see like where things are moving through the process.
As a follow-up, were these metrics a part of your RFP, RFQ for the actual system?
I don't believe we did key those as part of the RFP, the key metrics because we knew that we'd be able to just develop the ones that we want and the reporting that we want to do. I would defer to BSIT.
Yeah, we had reporting requirements as part of that. And one of the things we purchased was a dedicated reporting database that gives us access to the full set of data.
So that we can run any metrics that we would want to out of the system.
Correct.
So is it reasonable to ask for in the next month for at least a list of possible reports and metrics that you can run within the current system that you have outlined? I just want to know because as a body, I think that we as both legislators as well as constituent service managers as well, see things as well. And it may be a deliberative possibility for us to think about things that we would want to see based off of a specific tower district, but also specific to what may inform the city as a whole. I, I think that's informative for me as well because it is ultimately the things that we need to look at, especially when we are building out your KPIs for your actual budget for next year. So could we possibly get at least a list or possibly description of reports that you can possibly run with the current database based off of what BSIT has purchased?
Mm-hmm. Yes. We can, I mean, we can provide those potentials. Most of them are the ones that I just mentioned here. But yes, we can provide information on the types of reporting.
Okay, so.
Can I add, sorry, just pigging back on your first question. I'm excited to have the extra data available in my role and future roles. As I've heard from architects, for example, that have gotten their clients to complain about the time for permit. So having just the transparency to say, and by type of permit, because right now under the old system, we couldn't distinguish between the permit to build a 414 light tall skyscraper versus a roof deck. So having the different differentiation, ability to pull out different types is where I'd like to go. So we can say, hey, this is the average turnaround time and recognizing there's variables on the applicant quality and the permit quality. But saying, hey, this is what you should expect. This has been the last year, the average turnaround time for different types of permit has been X date. It's so people know both sides of what it's going to take. And that's where we want to make it easier for developers to say, hey, we know the typical time to turn around a permit to do a vacant home rehab is this much time. So they can plan ahead and so they know their carrying cost will be this much because they know how much time it's going to take.
That's perfect. I would like to know that because as you can see on our screen is an example of a dashboard from California, which is informative. But for someone who is one of the main recipients of your noncontiguous TIF in the development and your Western impact, this is important for people who are doing development in West Baltimore. These timelines are important because often I have developers as well as community and citizens who have carryover costs that they can't estimate. Right now, there's actually a gentleman in my inbox who's been waiting thirteen months for a payment link, right? This is a thing that is realistic to us. So I, that's why I'm asking for these reports, to make sure that these small things are being addressed because it is a low-hanging fruit that prevents people from wanting to do business in the city. With that being said, Commissioner, I do anticipate the dashboard will be ultimately looked, look something like this, but meaningfully, the volume is important to me. But also I recognize that it is the staffing on the ground that's important as well to actually do these, this actual work. I briefly want to talk about integrity testing. In August 2023, our city's Inspector General Office released a public synopsis regarding claims by two building inspectors that were offered money or gifts during inspections. The inspector general was concerned that all at a time, there was no formal guidance for building inspectors to reference if they received an offer of money or any gift. The inspector general recommended that DCHD require building inspectors to report any bribery attempts as well as DCHD develop a formal reporting process for such circumstances. Commissioner, in response to the IG's findings, you put guidance in place regarding attempted bribery. You indicated that there could not be issued is only official policy without review by the Department. the Department of Human Resources, the Labor Commissioner, and negotiations with applicable unions. Commissioner, I wanted to check whether it was determined that the guidance on attempted bribery should be turned into formal policy and whether that was done already. Also, has your department developed guidelines regarding discretion for instructors that can be exercised regarding minor compliance items found during an inspection?
Can you repeat the, I did not hear clearly the last three sentences?
That's fine. Have we formalized a policy and was it recommended that we formalized a policy?
So the, we have guidance under and have implemented that guidance. The policy is actually the existing policy, which is the, and not just policy, but law in terms of the ethics law, which this would fall under. So the reporting component and what that does in terms of the ethics law, how that, you know, I want to also be very clear that we did not, there was no evidence of bribery found at, under the OIG's investigation. DHD, the administration, we take this very seriously. And we also, you know, in that report that you read the question from, I believe that we also said that we are expanding the effort not just to inspectors, but to all employees to, you know, reiterate what the policy is, what the standard is, and what the standards are related already in existence to the AM manual, as well as the ethics law. So as it stands, the DHD, you know, employee would, if they were offered a bribe, they should report it directly to their supervisor, report that up, and then we actually submit that to the OIG. Since the 2023 report was made, we've actually internally through other means, we've actually followed process and law and existing policy and reported a suspicious activity to the OIG for investigation. So we're, we are following the existing laws and policies that are in place by the city to address any risk of that.
If I'm hearing you correctly, so we don't have an official integrity testing process?
We follow the, what is in place by the existing AM manuals and the existing ethics, ethics law.
So again, we have no formal policy for integrity testing to ensure that no one is receiving a bribe or improper payment for inspections?
We would, we would follow, there isn't one that is needed right now at the, at the agency level, because we follow what's in place at the, at the citywide level and through both AM manual as well as the ethics law.
Are you implying that you want to like, under secret shopper, like, offer bribes secretly?
So in other cities, they do actually have integrity testing for inspections because of this issue. One example is New York City, which was famous for it. They actually have the integrity testing through their agencies, through permitting. I'm asking because there have been accusations as well as insinuations, and this is an issue that has been discussed in my district alone, where an inspection took place one day, where a permit was issued the same day and the spectrum was closed that same day. So I just want to make sure that like, we should have integrity testing.
So what, what is the, what, so what's the question, Mr. Chair?
So the question is, since we don't have a process, can we establish a process for integrity testing?
We can, we can, we can certainly follow up, but for now, the process and the policy is what's laid out in the AMA and what is required by ethics. We do have what is currently on the books. We don't have the integrity testing that you're referring to, which is a secret permit shopper or whatever it is.
I guess I would encourage, if there is suspicion, I mean, you or whoever experienced a suspicious activity, although it wasn't clear, you said it was, a permit was issued the same day. I mean, I guess if there's suspicion, then it should be reported.
Oh, it was. But I still think that we should have integrity testing, given the light that we have.
Thank you, Councilman, Mr. Chair, and that's, and it's noted.
So can I have a commitment with a response about an actual integrity testing within one month of today?
A commitment to?
Whether or not you're going to examine with the Law Department, as well as the Ethics Board and others about doing integrity testing for your, for our employees.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize Councilman Remus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also have several questions. This conversation around the permit office and permitting is not new. It's been going on for a while. I've been in office for five years, and we've been talking about it since day one. My very first bill that I passed, and thank you to my colleagues for their support, was a bill to make sure that people who were selling properties that had BBNs on it disclosed that they had a BBN on it. And at that hearing, we talked about the permit office and one of the reasons why that this phenomenon was occurring, and that people were buying fully rehab homes, not everything. It's a very small number, but it is a significant issue. Were buying homes that were rehabbed that still had vacant building notices on it. And I had pulled a lot of folks out of, I had asked to pull a lot of folks out of tax sale in order to address this issue. At the hearing, three years ago, four years ago, we talked about the permit office. We had all of these discussions, and, you know, the commissioner coming in obviously knew through her work in the department, knew about these issues. So I think it was at that time that they started to think about what would a new permit office look like and had been doing the assessments. I had asked, and the city administrator said that she would, and I do this assessment about what exactly is happening in the permit office, from staffing to processes, to technology, to, to all of that. And I don't, I don't know, and maybe Deputy Mayor Williams, you might know whether or not a formal report was done or something like that, that would show kind of what the problem, what the challenges were, and what are the processes you're planning on, or that were the, the new office, we're focusing on technology for the new office at the moment, but was really looking to try to change.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not aware that commitment is before I started my role. My pledge or goal, pledge and goal was through this Be More Fast process to look, soup to nuts on the entire permit system, including in the permits office, and look at with fresh eyes how we're handling everything and make sure we're doing it efficiently.
Did you start that day one, when you, when you walked in? Because this is something that you had been thinking about, you know, given your professional work before then. And, you know, I'm glad that we've, we've started with the new office and that was announced, but it was committed to us a year ago. So I'm kind of curious, also, just putting the, my own question around the assessment aside, that the kind of timing around the, the announcement of the Be More Fast, I would have thought that you would have put some, that the mayor's office could have, not you, but mayor's office, put something together around the entire permit process earlier on and not just in anticipation of this hearing.
What, are you talking about the Be More Fast, Councilwoman? That's, that's, that is, that is incredibly inaccurate. This was not something that was thrown together for hearing. I'm not particularly appreciative of that comment. I, I would, I would, nor is the administration. Obviously, this is something that Deputy Mayor Williams has been working on for quite some time, and it has gone through internal review, and it is at this very moment also still being internally reviewed prior to like full and actual launch. We want to do things comprehensively, and we want to make sure that when we roll them out, we roll them out with a comprehensive communication plan, and also ensuring that the agencies have all the resources they need in order to be able to execute the plan. There's no point of a plan if we don't have the people to execute, right? And similarly, if we don't have the people in place, right? So it is an iterative process. The work is ongoing. Deputy Mayor Williams has said time and time again, you've heard it from Mayor Scott himself, right? We are committed to this work, but we have to do it comprehensively. And what I don't want is for whatever comes out of this hearing to be a statement that essentially delegitimizes, I think, the work that, that we've done here. As so as to say that we, we just threw it together to have something to present to this committee, that's, that's not the case.
And I appreciate all the work that has been done, no question about it. I think everybody understands the great need for it. My question is just because, you know, we have been talking about this for a really long time. And when we are asking questions, because you're going to get more questions from me and from my other colleagues, and you just heard from Mr. President and Mr. Chair, what are the timelines? When are we going to see things? What are we doing? And we're seeing, and we're hearing, we're still working on it. We're still thinking about it. And that's, that's fine to keep thinking about it, but we'd like to know, you know, when those timelines are going to come about? What are we actually doing? Because this is not a situation that is, you know, it is an emergency situation. We have to get this right. And so, again, the commissioner's been working on the technology and going through it for a year and, or more. And so making sure that, you know, she's supported with all of these other, this other work, I would have thought would have actually occurred by now. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. And to your point, it is an emergency and it, and it requires that level of attention, right? And that means that when we roll it out, it has to be ready to go. So there's, we understand the need. The deputy mayor has communicated it. Mayor Scott is hell-bent on us getting this done. We will get it done.
Okay, well, I'll ask my questions about timelines then still. But before I go into that, Deputy Mayor, I'm wondering if you could help us clarify the role of the Director of the Permit and Development Services. I think we've all sort of been jokingly calling it a permit czar, but I, the reason I'm asking is because Ms. Lewis in the permit office, I have to say, she has done an amazing job of helping to make sure that people are actually, when they call us, and then we refer to her and to the commissioner, that permits are getting through. So to me, you know, people who are like Ms. Lewis, who is putting, you know, getting all of the pieces together, seems to be what, what that position is. So what's the difference? Is it, is the position also looking at this whole umbrella comprehensively, and you're going to be, or somebody's going to be the point person to say, okay, right of way, now it's your turn to go through all of this to be able to get integrated into the system? And DPW, it's your turn to get all, so can you explain a little bit more about, you know, the role, please?
Yeah, my, my vision is twofold. So I guess the big level picture is the director will be charged with the full process, soup to nuts across all the agencies, from thinking about acquisition issues like lien release and things, improving that to deed recordation, and just nuts and bolts of permitting at HCD's building permit, but also right-of-way permits to DOT separately. And this is where like kind of we'll see how the workload develops, or how it, if we can expand the role and even have more of a team, because, I'm sorry?
Speak in the mic.
Thank you. There'll be expanding the team. It might, the goal would be to do what Ms. Lewis is doing as a permit liaison in DHD, but across the enterprise, because it's often issues that come to me now, where it's because I've had my prior professional experience, knowing how to unstick things, because there's issues when it's like negotiating between, if a stormwater management plan changes some way, then that changes what happens at forest conservation, and what changes what happens at critical area review. And so having someone with that cross-agency but centralized experience to help unstick things and kind of explain in layperson's terms, hey, this is the issue, because often, very often I look into things, it's like a miscommunication or someone didn't understand the requirements. And also, my vision is like that having a third party kind of be fair in calling balls and strikes. I used the example yesterday in the luncheon where the state senator was complaining about the delay of a review of permit, but through the BCNR process, we could see it was 150 days on the applicant side to turn something around. So it wasn't the city, but they blamed the city. And so having kind of a fair, objective person in a role to keep agencies in line is where I'd like to get to. And so both on like the holding ourselves accountable, but also being a customer-facing, friendly person who can help be the liaison, say, there's no wrong door. You come into the city government, we're going to get you to the right place, and the city, you know, getting things to a yes as opposed to a no.
This sounds like more than one person.
Right.
So my question is, how does that, are you going to be asking for a budget enhancement in your office to, to try to work through this? What's the, what's the overall plan for, for the money piece on this?
The plan is to see how things are progressing. It's just step one was getting this plan launched, and then step two, we working to see how, how it's working, and then eventually through probably the next budget process of seeing how things relate. It's a priority, and I know this is one of those investments that would be revenue generating. And there's ways, and I know there's a bigger push with the Budget Director at the last board of estimates hearing, talk about a fee schedule, a fee review. And so my view, my vision is, is the fee review work comes back in, we will be able to say, hey, this is how much it costs to do the work, and if we need to then raise fees to make sure our staffing levels are commensurate with what needs to happen, that's what we want to do.
So are you going to be coming to us with something in terms of part of the budget for this? Because I think that you're hearing a willingness for us to go to bat for you on this, because it is so important.
I would not envision coming to you this budget cycle on the Be More Fast, or like the Director of Permit and Development Services piece. I think there are like.
Who's going to need support?
There's lower hanging fruit, for example, to focus on like the FIRE Marshals Office. So like, that's where like, wanted to go at the time immediately, short term, and then come back medium, long term to look at what the future looks like.
But I would imagine, and my understanding of how the positions get created, is that we want to actually create them in the budget process and not have to do what's happening at FIRE right now, which is that they have to reclassify. We had the same thing when we were working on some of the interim lawyers as well, where that was a commitment mid-year. So that's what I'm asking. And so, so you're, you're going to take a look at sort of what the capacity is going to be needed, because I'd like to make sure that those positions are created during the budget process and not something that you have to reclassify later, in which case we're going to end up waiting six months.
I hear you saying, I mean, I think we're not, the point for this budget cycle for the Director of Permit and Development Services and a team to be, I guess, fully staffed. Yeah, but.
So the city administrator wasn't joking when she said that you're actually going to be the person doing this?
Well, there'd be, I mean, I guess there's existing positions to look at. I mean, and for example, we've worked with office performance innovation thus far already and made some great strides. So it's like seeing existing capacity to get the work done and recognizing the focus and having the destination and like the imprimatur from the mayor and city administrator to go across agencies, because that's the issue I've had in my current role as deputy mayor with oversight of DHD is like, I don't oversee DPW. So having the official kind of blessing to go in and say, hey, this is important, and you have a stormwater review, this is a priority, and that we need to help sit down and sort out what the issue is and come to an answer, will be easier when there's like the destination.
Right. Well, I, I think we're, we're, as you can hear from some of the questions, we're looking at, you know, what does that actually look like and what the money's going to look like so that we can, you know, advocate for it as well. So hopefully, we can get more details about that before budget.
Co-sign, I mean, often it'd be before budget by co-signing here, developer saying, we will pay whatever needs, we were willing to pay more to get effective service, and so that.
Oh, you're looking for a funding source. That's why you brought up the fee schedule.
Yes. That's an example where I know, I think, yeah, developers are willing, and we want to make sure we achieve the service, and, you know, if they're going to pay more, make sure we can deliver, but we know there's a willingness there to do it, to do it the right way and be more efficient. So that's where I like to steer things.
Got it. So then, back to sort of the timelines question, we, in one of the slides that is in the presentation and the one that we got yesterday, was talking about the standardization for timelines for permit review. So for instance, I mean, just taking all the pieces, right? From the application to when somebody's going to hear about their application and review, you know? It might not be approval, but at least there's going to be some communication, right? That might, you know, be five days. I'm just pulling this out of the air right now, okay? So, you know, that might be five days. Whereas then, you know, once you get that and you get the, you know, plans review and the permits approved, then you do the construction, that's their own timeline, that's what it is. And then, you know, somebody's calling for the inspection, and then, you know, how long is it going to take for an inspector? Because what we're hearing, and I think you hear it also, is that there's so many random timelines. So when are we going to see that sort of timeline plan for all of these various things? So it's the permit office work, it's, I got a lot to say about our, you know, right-of-way stuff, which we're not going to cover today, but we're going to cover in a future hearing. You know, the, when are we going to see all of that? Because it is one of the initiatives in your plan.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I, I can't even venture a fair guess. I mean, it's, it's important to me, it's a priority, I don't, but there's things to dig into like right of way, and there's so many different components.
Well, how about we start with the basics of the permit office right now as it stands?
Right, so I think we're, I mean, we're probably closer there, and then I think, well, the housing team can correct me, there are like internal timelines on when permits in, how long it takes to get to assigned, and then.
Well, I think what I'm asking is what can we, what we should be expecting, okay? I'm just going to use example, five days, it could be two, but I'm just going to use that as an example. It could be two, but I'm just going to use that as an example. So the application comes in and permit is starting to be reviewed. But at the minute they say submit, and then they will hear from somebody, so that people, you know, as you know, developers and rehabbers and everybody else likes certainty. And that's what I'm trying to get at. So it says that you're going to get there. It's just a matter of when you're going to be able to have that for us.
Right. But I guess, well, they can speak up from the housing side. But I think there's even, because there's so many different subpieces of it needs to be reviewed. But then I need to say, well, it depends if it's in a CHAP district, then it goes CHAP.
No question.
So I recognize, I'm not-
No question. Yeah, I agree with that.
But I think there are so many different details. So it's like, I know we have certain things already in a system that we can control. And then I would anticipate there should be at least a commitment and timeline to say it needs to be referred to CHAP by within a certain deadline or a certain, certain time period. But then you probably can't commit when CHAP will approve. But I'd like to get to that point where we expect CHAP, if it's a CHAP staff level review and not a CHAP hearing, then we should expect the staff to do their work within a certain time.
Yep.
That's where I want to go. I can't venture a guess. I mean, I hear you. And if the mission and the directive from the Council is to focus on kind of the building permit turnaround, that I acknowledge that.
So, and you know, in looking at one of the things that is part of the review of workflows and office and all of the fun stuff that has resulted in a lot of, and that review resulted in a lot of things that are in B-MOREFAST. One of them was looking at what we wanted to put in as kind of draft, just in terms of the system, to get some of those timelines in to see how things are. So we do know like potential expected, like when would this be due potentially from a CHAP review or from another agency? We do guarantee and have the guarantee on the plans reviews already. That's been in place. So that's that two to eight week time period.
Two to eight weeks. That's like Verizon saying that they'll be here between 12 and seven and, you know?
That's because it's based on the type of project. Because each plan is different. So, I mean, larger plans take larger time to review and smaller plans take a shorter time to review. So that's why it does have, have that, you know, six week timeframe in there on the, on the plans review side. So, you know, we'll be working with the Deputy Mayor as well as the Director of Permit and, you know, to, to be able to look at what those timelines are. And that would be part of, you know, also the dashboard and reporting. Like if we've set this goal, then what is the percent of number? Like what is the percent of permits that is hitting this goal for this review? Whether or not it's in within DHC D or within other partner agencies as well.
Well, so when do we anticipate getting some of the, I mean, obviously, it's going to be in phases as B-MOREFAST continues. And you said that you already have some of that already. Can you provide the committee some of that already?
Well, we don't, we don't have the, it's not, what we have is what's been kind of structured at this moment. That's not the set in stone. Because that, you know, we have the other reviews and conversations with some of the other agencies, the work under B-MOREFAST, which would then be able to put those, those goals in. But, you know, to be able to meet those.
Oh, so if I'm hearing you correctly, you're not comfortable with talking about your timeframes until the whole pieces of the puzzle are? Because I, I mean, I get it. Somebody is putting in a permit. They have to go through our, you know, right-of-way as well. They have to go through the stormwater. And sometimes we find a crazy pipe in the middle of someplace that didn't, we didn't even see. And then, you know, so, so I get sort of that. But maybe it's standardized based on the type of project. I mean, I, you know, yield to your expertise, both of you on that. But, you know, I think what we want is just like, you know, if a constituent comes to us and says, we submitted our permit yesterday. Where is it? We'll have to say, no, you can't get it in a day. You know what I mean? Like, I mean, I'm just, as an example.
Yeah. I think where I'd like to get to too is I've taken inspiration from what Governor Shapiro's done in Pennsylvania on some of the non-discretionary permits, because he even has like a timeline. And then even like guaranteeing fees will be refunded if it takes too long. The issue I've thought about here though is unfortunately, when there's the plans, there's bad plans. And we submit, if the reviewers say these plans aren't right, send it back. And then we get returned plans are still wrong. It's like hard to guarantee when will be done. But we could guarantee, we should be guaranteeing like when you submit back, how long it will take us to look at it and get it back.
That's what I'm saying. You know, because approval is totally dependent on a lot of different factors. And what I'm saying is, okay, you submit your plans and we're going to get back to you in two days, whether we've got questions or whether we're, I'm just using two as an example. But, you know, so that's kind of the sort of pieces of the process. And, and if you're waiting on sort of the whole B-MOREFAST piece of this, are we looking at a year for all of this to be put in place with B-MOREFAST? In terms of being able to understand the timelines, all of the systems working together? I guess I'm just trying to get a better sense of like when we're going to see implementation of all of this. And, and we want to be your partners in terms of, you know, trying to figure out what systems work, what don't work, what we're hearing. Certainly on the lien release piece, I want to be a part of that. So, you know, how that, how that would end up working.
Second colleague, sorry, Councilman, Madam Vice Chair, I just want to interject one second because I know one of our staff people has to get home. And I think Councilman Jones has the question. If you don't mind, defer into Councilman Jones for one question.
Sure.
Councilman Jones.
I do need a answer to that question though, so, yeah.
She's going to finish her question or?
You can finish and then we'll defer to him.
Yeah. I mean, the answer to the Councilwoman's question is, is that we will follow up. So you can have Tony noted in the request and then we can follow up in a written response on what the timeline will look like. Does that sound good?
Yeah. I'd really like to know when we can expect a system to be complete, like all of the B-MOREFAST work to be completely completed. So that we can, you know, be a part of the conversation.
Okay. Tony, you got it? You got that one for? I guess if you want to restate it, Madam Vice Chair?
What I'm looking for is in a couple of weeks' time or, you know, at some point soon, before budget hearings, let's just do that. You know, a timeline that we can expect certain phases to be implemented of B-MOREFAST and when we'll have the complete implementation. Because I know with the Permit Office, there's still parts of it being implemented. So we'll include that in there as well.
Okay. Thank you. Will do.
And clarifying, by the budget hearing, correct?
By the budget hearing, yeah.
Yeah. And Tony will send it when he sends us all the requests.
Just making sure we have finite answers.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to defer for one question to Councilman Jones and back to Vice Chair, Marimos.
Just had a few quick questions, just for clarifying, clarification and really trying to understand. First, Chief Wallace, just had a clarification. If you can clarify the difference. Oh, just, oh, the finance one. Okay. Yeah. Um, the finance one, do you have any idea regarding how much B-MOREFAST will cost?
Yeah. So Director Larson, who has to go here quickly, will follow up with the committee and already communicated to the Chair that she communicated that by the first week of April, she'll have conducted her analysis of the cost here.
Because that was my question. Okay. Cool. By the first week of April. Got it. That could work. Okay.
Thank you, Tony. We'll record that. We'll go back to Councilman Marimos and then I'll go with-
Sure. I'll be finishing up soon. I have a question also about when we talk about the implementation. If you can also let us know what the staffing is going to look like. So we may need some improvements on staffing in R O and right-of-way. We may need improvements in staffing in lien release. We need, you know, like the whole soup to nuts so that we can plan and help you plan for this budget and next budget. I'm assuming that's kind of the timeframe you're looking at, is that?
And I don't, yeah, that's one where there's some areas where I can eyeball and know and forecast how long it'll take something like this. I don't have the experience to know how long it would take to get the details on lien release, finance.
That would be finance, but they're, they're involved in the conversation already.
I mean, I guess my, I mean, we want to do a comprehensive staffing plan. I guess I, and soon, I still know, I can't, I mean, I can give a thought and come back with a better timeline that's framed on things. But I guess that's, that's the issue.
It would be in the same sort of spirit as the previous question in terms of implementation? Like by, by topic or whatever, when it's going to be implemented, when you'll have the staffing plan, that kind of thing.
Right. And in my vision, it's like if it needs to be done, I hope it can be done in-house. But is one of those, is it worth having someone facilitate that externally? I don't know the answer. But that's, that's what I'm considering is like, is it worth doing the best practice from other jurisdictions on certain things, like right-of-way permits? But I don't know how easy or hard that is. And then also, there's labor issues and other things to consider. So that's the piece, especially I don't have a big, that's why I'm sort of, can't be more precise.
Sure. I mean, I, I understand looking at other cities, but I have to tell you, we are unique, okay? Our demands are unique. Our, you know, housing stack that we need to deal with is unique. We have more fires than anybody else in the entire U, and that's not totally true, but it's close. So there's, so we are, our challenges are different than everybody else's challenges. So I'm just acknowledging that piece, that you've got to sort of think that through. Good ideas from other places, happy to steal them, fine. But not everything is going to be a cookie cutter. So sometimes we're going to have to be creative. And that's when I'm just giving you that space, that we may need to do this budget cycle and next budget cycle. Not everything in the next budget cycle though, because I think, again, my statement about how much of an emergency this, this is. And then Commissioner, I have, I get this question all the time, so I wanted to just ask you directly. The folks that are working in the Permit Office frontline, and I guess, you know, throughout, are they working at, in the office five days a week? Are they part of the pilot to do two days a week? What's the, how's that, how's that working? Because I know we still have the directive of some, some employees, not just DACD, but citywide, working part, you know, sometimes at home and sometimes at night. I just want to get a sense of, you know, when somebody's calling into the call center, which I do have some questions about the call center, then, you know, are they actually reaching somebody because they are at their desk?
So the, we'll defer on the call center because that's a whole other different-
Sure.
-component. But permit staff has been in the office, has been in the office actually since 2022.
2022, when we were all coming back?
Yeah. First office back was the permits office.
So there's nobody working telework or anything?
No. Yeah.
Okay. I, I get that question. So I just wanted to make it public.
The permit staff, the permits office has been fully staffed in, in person since everybody came back in 2022. It was the first office that was back. Like it was one of the priorities to be back in person.
Gotcha. Okay. Now, I'm, I have, I have some questions on the right-of-way, but we're going to defer that till I can invite DOT in. But I think the Deputy Mayor knows I've got some challenges with those. So, and they do too. So we'll defer to that. But I do appreciate your time today. And, you know, we will follow up with some other, some other questions as well. But I want to give my other colleagues a chance to ask questions and we have some public testimony. Hopefully, they've stayed. So, yeah. Thank you.
Perfect. Before I move to Councilman Jones, just a alert about staff that we just want to make sure for the B-MOREFAST costs, just to be considerate of the fact of like the consolidated costs across agencies. So while we're implementing things, the new position for the Director of Permit Reform, in addition to the chief's pens or any other staffing requirements, that's what we just want to make sure is recorded and calculated into the cost of the program. Just, just so that we're on the same page, what the consolidated cost is. But I'm going to go to Councilman Jones.
But Tony has that?
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page in this recording. Councilman Jones.
All right. Thank you. Sorry about that. Chief, what the question I was going to, we need a clarification on is just when it came to the fire inspectors versus the permit folks? Just the qualifications versus the duties as well? Kind of the difference between those two? Like what the inspector kind of does for, and like what the qualifications would be to be for that inspector and their duties versus the permit person? Just wondering, because I, I hear them come up a lot within the framework.
Yeah. I'll, I'll start for you, Councilman. Thank you. And then I'll, I'll defer over to Chief Eames. So, so we'll start with the plans reviewers. Those are literally the, they work at the first stop, right? When the plans come in for review. We have certifications for them, which Chief Eames will talk about. I'm going to focus more in on the fire prevention, people that are in the field. So they're actually trained to a fire inspector one or a fire inspector two level. Right now, they're sworn positions. They come from fire suppression. They take those classes and then they test through the civil service process and they promote into those positions. That's your field force. Those are the ones that are actually going out, doing the boots-on-the-ground inspections, you know, reviewing the permits for issuance. But they're also, sometimes you even see them in, in this body. They're in here for compliance purposes with regard to overcrowding and other issues. But I'll, I'll kind of let Chief Eames take it from here.
Yes, sir. To be somebody certified to do plans, you need to complete plans examination course at the National Fire Academy. There's also one offered at the Merlin Fire Rescue Institute. It's basically between, at the Fire Rescue Institute, that's an 80-hour class, and MIFRE is actually 40 hours. Gives you kind of a broad overview of what the plan review process is. However, the internship to become a proficient plan reviewer could be upwards of six months or even longer. As the more experience you get, then you can go from a small building to a medium-sized building, to a large building, a fire alarm that's only 10 devices. Like basically, the more experience that you get. But the only course you need to take is the ones that I just mentioned to you.
Got it. And that's kind of like the permit person, the permit plans review individual. And then inspector is more like the sworn officer. Got you. Okay. Thanks for that clarification. And I know you mentioned earlier that you had a vision in a particular way, sorry, for Chief, about how you wanted to go about using that third-party inspection. It was more so looking at the smaller projects and kind of allowing that to get the load off. Was that also incorporating, I guess, this new vision of third-party inspectors? Because I've heard third-party inspectors used in two different ways. Just wondering if the new B-MOREFAST track was also incorporated in that statement that you made?
I think the fire department is looking at third-party plan review. I think the third-party inspector would be more of a DACD, a mechanical, electrical and plumbing. That's my, my understanding of that.
Okay. It, and just for your, is that for the inspection, you were thinking more so planning and is that how?
I don't think we've mentioned third-party inspection yet. It's something I've heard as a suggestion that, but the issues are similar where I, it, just as a layperson, I thought, well, how do we ensure that the third-party inspector, who's not a city employee, has, has the integrity and is doing the right thing and how we audit that to make it work? Something, I think it's worth doing or looking at as an option because we recognize that it can be a bottleneck. I haven't heard as many complaints from the development community about the mechanical building inspection side.
Okay.
So.
The biggest thing on the mechanical inspection side is actually what's in B-MOREFAST around looking at the licensing requirements for those positions.
License. Okay. So B-MOREFAST isn't necessarily looking at the mechanical side as much, correct? That was more so-
Sorry. And maybe-
Do I have that backwards? I'm just trying to understand.
So I think in the B-MOREFAST initiative is, I mean, the slipnotes version is looking at everything of-
Okay.
-development process and how to make it better and how to look at it with fresh eyes and be more efficient. And where necessary, even add more staff, increase fees to have more staff. But there might also be regulations and requirements that aren't necessary, public self, public health and safety. And so, whereas, so I guess an issue I understand we have with hiring in city mechanical inspectors is it's hard to find them who are qualified to do the work and have the licenses. That's something we'd want to look at is can people be cross-trained or not? And then should we pay more? Do we have to do what we need to do to ensure we're meeting the workload?
I got you. I'm just trying to get clarification of whether or not B-MOREFAST inspector, that inspector portion also includes some of the fire portion that we're talking about.
So the B-MOREFAST initiative is, the initiative is look at, I mean, a focus in the Mayor's offices pledge and administration's pledge to look at the full process iteratively to make sure we're doing everything we can do to make permits more predictable and transparent.
Which not saying you're committed, which could also include the fire inspections?
I think so. As part of that, especially with the imprimatur of being able to officially, because right now, we've had a good relationship with the fire department, but with the destination and the blessing from the Mayor and the City Administrator to say, oh, we need to go, Deputy Mayor, you can now work with fire and say, we need to make sure this is a priority and work to do the third-party review.
If, if, if that is the plan, I think there would need to be some more communication. That, that's all. Because I kind of can see some, some miscommunication within a conversation picking up between B-MOREFAST and the fire department. Because, you know, that-
I mean, I think, I mean, B-MOREFAST is the initiative, I agree, it's a part of it.
I got it. That, that falls under everyone. But I think if we're going to make this a reality, then everyone needs to be on board and everyone needs to know what the plan is. Just moving forward, that's, that's kind of one thing I wanted to highlight. But just my next question for you, Chief, about how much time does- But just my next question for you, Chief, about how much time does it usually take for an inspection for like a use in occupancy, occupancy permit to happen from request to either, from request to whether or not the structure pass will fail the inspection?
Typically, when we receive a request from D A C D, we get it assigned to an inspector either the same day or the next day. It's our goal to have an inspection done in between five and 10 days. We can't necessarily say they're going to be, they'll pass or get approval.
Exactly.
But, but that's.
Yeah, and whether you get to fail a pass portion, so about 10 days usually.
Worst case.
Okay. I noticed like that was kind of the entry level benchmark and majority of, you know, the permits were passed within 10 days, it looked like during the presentation you had done. I noticed there were, you know, at least 800, you know, permits that was in the over 90-day mark at one portion. I think it's never the thousands that, that we hear about that, that gets done within the 10 days. It's those 800 that we hear may take over 90 days that makes us all pull, pull our hair out. I guess my question for anyone who may answer it, what, what kind of is the typical reason for like, you know, 800 permits to take over 90 days? Is it just the back and forth for the application is missing something? And is there something that we can, whatever that thing is, is there a way we can give that more attention so it can get done quicker?
I'll speak first and then all the housing also add in, even in private practice. So the, part of the issue with the, especially the old system is, and how our entire system is, sometimes you have to apply for a permit, like a U N O permit, but on the front end of a project. So the liquor board, for example, requires you to apply for a U N O permit on the front end, and then you can't complete it because if you're an applicant for liquor license, you haven't even moved into your lease, your lease space yet, but you need to submit a U N O permit application. And it might take two years to resolve leasing, financing, build out, and then they come back for the U N O. Or you might not, you might file a new U N O. And so there's, I imagine, many permits in the system that are like that. That's like, the variables can be, the applicant walked away, or didn't need to, or had to apply early for some other requirement that may or may not make sense. That's why, I mean, I know housing and fire have been resistant on some of their stats in the old system to say, here's a stat because it's skewed by so many different variables like that. I'm sure there's other examples they can speak to too.
Yep. The, the time it takes for a permit is really dependent on what the permit is for, how complete the application is, how diligent both the different agencies are as well as the applicant. And so, you know, many permits get issued within 24 or 48 hours because it's a very quick review. It doesn't take, and it shouldn't take very long to approve a permit for a hot water heater. But that permit looks the same as a permit to construct a 10-story skyscraper, except it's going to take a couple of years of review on both sides of the table in order to get that permit to the finish line and have it issued. And so you really need to dig in individually into each permit to see what's taking so long. Some permits get applied for because they need to get a permit in to start their, their development process and their financing process, but they're not ready to actually submit a set of plans. And so the permit is applied for, but nothing is uploaded for anybody on the city side to review yet. The clock in, in some essence starts ticking at that point because it looks like something's been applied for until you dig a little deeper and see that the plans have been uploaded. Once those plans are uploaded, they get circulated, and that's where you get potentially the back and forth between the reviewer and the architect or the engineer or whoever else is involved in that project as to what's missing, what needs clarification, what needs to be added. And depending on those comments, you know, the response back could be really quick or it could take months, where they're redrafting how they laid out the sprinkler system, or they're redrafting or redesigning because their step enclosures don't open up properly. So, so the, the timing is really difficult to say.
And you know, I, I would just suggest, wonder if there's a way within the process of why we collecting this data, if we can, you know, when we're take, when we're looking at benchmarks and times, if we can capture when we respond to them and kind of send it back and then whether or not, and then kind of like almost in some sense, close it out until we get it back again from them. Because I think if this is going to be data-driven, we would want to make sure we can tell the difference between, you know, someone just sending permits and waiting for their financing and not looking for nothing back and not responding back versus someone who's been trying to beat down, you know, the city door on getting some, some process done, you know, on their project. So. And just a few more questions regarding with the fire depart, fire department. I'll try to run, run through my questions for you all. Chief, if you were, you know, got your re-staff, your, your, your re-classification done and along with, you know, third-party support, I guess my question would be, what kind of improvements would you feel like customers may see with, with those changes?
So we've already, just with the, the addition of just the, the part-time person in plans reviews, I think that's where a lot of our, you know, our slowdowns have historically occurred. We've already seen, you know, just a drastic improvement right now, just in, I've only got the month of January data, we're looking at about an 86, 87% success rate there for returns within 30 days. So that's, that's an improvement just behind, you know, a part-time person. Naturally, I, I can't predict what that would look like with, with the three re-classes plus a third-party supplement to that, but I think just showing just one plus some, some changes of personnel, change of command inside of the office, we've already seen, begun to see that result in, in this, you know, current fiscal year. So I, I would like to say that, that trend obviously should continue. I'm, I'm very optimistic that it will, but I'm, you know, I'm hesitant at this point. I think what we need to remember is, you know, the numbers of permits that we're getting is continuously going up, right? And we're staffing, attempting to keep pace with that. So I'm optimistic. I, I think it'll continue in the direction it's in.
But when, when it comes to manpower, almost within 30 days, we could start to see some, something, not, not major, but, but with, with the re-classifications and people getting into those positions and starting to work, how quickly you think we may see an improvement?
So that's based upon a plan reviewer that's trained, fully trained. It's going to take that person, he or she time to get up, but if we get the three new positions plus the part-time, we could probably turn every plan around. We probably have a, a 100% turnaround of the first plan review, you know, within 30 days. We can't say the permit will be done and finished. We might issue them a potential comment, but the goal would be to get every plan done in 30 days, a smaller plan done in five days. It's just, the more people we have, the better we can do.
And, and I now, I'm, I'm kind of seeing a, a disconnect too that I get it, like you got the plan reviewer, which may take 30 days, and from that plan reviewer, they then act for an inspection after that, which may take 10 days, I guess. Is that on average where you would like, maybe it takes them 10 days for an inspector to come out for a land use occupancy permit?
Sir, Captain Dawson, once the plan is reviewed, there will be a period of time because fires just once spoke. The gatekeeper is housing. When fire signs off, it goes back to housing. As long as the submitter has completed everything, paid their fees, and then pulled their drawings from the system, current protocol is that they call 311. And we will call you within seven business days. It tells you the day you called and the day we should call you back on your confirmation number. We are over a 90% rate at calling in. As far as getting your inspection, it's going to vary. I have high-rise buildings, quite a few to do. So when they call and they want to do an inspection, they might need a three-hour block. I might have 15 small projects that are already in the queue. So we try to get you on average in about two weeks, depending on the intricacy of the task that's going to be done for the systems. For the use in occupancy, general turnaround can be within 14 business days. Once a seller is fully vetted up into phase two for fire, you can request your scheduling, request it, not set up your date. The inspector should be able to evaluate it, respond back and say, I'll be out here at this date, and have your review set up within 14 business days or sooner, depending on the request.
And the review is a physical inspection out on the site?
One-site inspection, yes, sir.
On the site inspection, when you say review, okay. So first we have the, the plan, which then takes 30 days, which runs through each agency and everyone else. And once that comes back and everything is paid for, then you can request for someone to physically come out, which then takes another inspection.
That's correct. And not every use in occupancy required a plan review first. Eighty, probably 70 to 80% of our use in occupancies are driven by current changes in code, change in ownership. So you might have Lucky's Bar on the corner. As soon as they turn around, they put their permit into housing and housing processes the application. The occupant may say, I'm ready to go and get my inspection. So from date of application process, through housing, putting it approved, that the use applications in, they could very well be requesting an inspection within 24 to 48 hours. And then when it hits the reviewer, I'm sorry, the inspector that needs to do the inspection, we could get to you within 14 business days or sooner, conduct your inspection and however your approval goes, is where you're going to stand. Soon as fire is done, then the next agency comes in. Building will always be the last and health doesn't depend on anybody.
Got it. And I guess when it comes to the B more fast track kind of inspection regarding fire, can anyone answer for me, like, has that model been used in other jurisdictions when it comes to third-party inspections?
Yeah, and again, I think, well, maybe, maybe I misspoke, but there, there is not a recommendation or plan now to third-party inspection.
Okay.
It would still be, even with the third-party review we've been talking about for the plans review, which we think will have bandwidth, because like Commander Eames and Kevin Dawson are some of the hardest working people I know in government. They're responding to emails from me and the mayor's office at 11, 12 at night, and they're out in the field and telling me the part of the issue, I'm sure, and they can speak better than I can, that they're in the field doing inspections on the big properties and looking at plans and coming back and doing both and, and also answering calls and questions and responding to emails from the entire cities. So having this more capacity will certainly make their jobs easier, make it easier to do the work. I mean, a common pain point we get from developers is, oh, I, I got, I missed a fire inspection by one minor thing, but of course, they always exaggerate how minor it is. And also then the point is, they are doing up 20 other, 30 other jobs and they're need to have the time to come back to do the one minor review. And that's, takes time and on their efforts, having more staff will free up that time and hopefully we'll see the results very quickly that'll flow through.
So the plan is with more staff, with more, I guess, citizen staff to do the planning part, it will then free up more fire, actually sworn-in officers to do the inspections? Is that, that what you're?
So, yes, sir. And what I do is I do dual role. So if you turn around and there's a plan reviewer that takes my spot, then that gives that 40-hour work for that plan reviewer to just concentrate on drawings. On average, within a week, I do most of my inspections on Mondays and Fridays, and within those two days alone, I complete upwards of 16 inspections on average. That's even including the high-rises. So if I'm just dedicated to doing the inspection and the systems testing, because that's what I do, and it gives me more time to concentrate on that, instead of, I'm in the office between eight and nine fielding phone calls, where's my plan, where's my plan? The comments are in there, you haven't responded back, can you tell me when they're going to be done? And then scheduling my inspections. I hit the office at eight, I'm out the door by nine, I'm running my inspections until three, back in trying to log it digitally. With the Acela platform, I can go completely mobile and it's going to free me up.
Are, are there other jurisdictions that allow third-party, you know, firms or whoever to do the inspections you do, that you know of?
So there's a couple of other jurisdictions in Maryland that do third-party plan review.
Okay, but not inspect?
So Montgomery has a, a form of it. Gaithersburg has a firm, a, a form of that, Rockville, and, and of course, Prince George County, that's where I worked at. So they, so they do do third-party plan review.
Got you. How about far as inspection-wise, any, that you all know of, any inspection?
I'm not aware of third-party inspections, just plan.
Yeah, I'll just, just clarify.
So for use in occupancy and fire inspections, I'm not aware of them. They are all departmental. Carroll County just hired Maryland State Fire Marshals. There are required specialty inspections that the building code officials may require a third-party inspector to inspect prior to the building code official coming out. And those are going to be intricate systems. But within the state, I'm not aware of any. And as we said, I can give you an example, during COVID, the state fire marshals office tried to do self-certification, allowing contractors to certify their work. There was a very mixed bag on that.
Got you. Got you. All right. I appreciate it. And when, I guess, when it comes to the third-party plans, third, using third-party plan inspectors, will that be more so a requirement for some developers or would they have the option if this was to go up and run and to kind of go through the traditional way?
Yeah, I think the vision would be, it'd be optional. I guess we should look at the options out there. I mean, that was how I conceived it, but this is where we need, this is still preliminarily kind of sketched out, but in my head, I would think we want to have just the option so people could do the normal track, because I'd like, I feel it'd be to have the inequity of having like a, a pay-to-play, like, hey, if you have more money, you get this special treatment access, but if you don't, then you got to do the normal thing. So having parity in the pricing and then also the, the process is where I'd like to go, but maybe there are benefits that I'm not going to think enough.
And I guess my, my question would, do you feel like this would add an additional cost to projects or, you know, whatever someone's doing that's, that's well over the permit cost, the traditional permit cost?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's not in my mind, although I do, I do recognize, and this is where like, like, I know that sometimes they offer overtime to do inspection, but I imagine they, they, we offer as much overtime as you want and that it can be paid for by a developer, but they don't have enough manpower, capacity to do the work sometimes. So just having more people in the ecosystem to do certain parts of the work will just free up capacity to get the work done with our existing staff in the framework. So, but I guess to answer the question succinctly, I wouldn't expect there to be an increase specifically for the third-party review process.
What was that last part?
I wouldn't expect there to be a specific, but maybe, but I guess, an, an increased costs beyond like the cost of doing the work. I guess that'd be the question to look at as we sketch out this program is, you know, is the price that's charged fair and is it going to be run through the city or is it going to be paying developer to reviewer or reviewer directly? And that's something I know fire's been thinking about deeply, about how, how we run the process and how do we make sure it has the integrity?
If I can, there, there may also be a cost savings involved with that type of review based on the timing it takes. And for these large projects and the amount of overhead that they may be carrying, you know, we have been approached by people in the past saying, can't we do it this way? That they are willing to pay more in some cases because time is money. So it, it's something to explore as we go through this.
Council President, you have a question?
Council President Cohen has the clarifying question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to clarify, just, I, I don't want to get confused here. The option, it would be that the developer would be paying for the third-party review, right? Like, we're not, this, just to the councilman's point, like, this is not going to make it more expensive for the city. This is?
Yeah, sorry, and thank you for clarifying, I'm just speaking. But yeah, I guess the question was, does, does the money flow to the city then back to the third-party or just to the third-party directly? Or like, how would we have a pool of third-party eligible, like, people we've certified as they can do good work or not? And that's, I think they've done more thinking in the fire department, so I don't want to speak for them, but that was the thing to sort out.
Yeah. I, I just want to be clear that this is not like the city is going to pay additional for a third-party review. This is, and I've heard numerous developers say they would be more than happy because it would save them time.
Right. Yes, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
And I guess, just to finish up my last few questions, I guess, how would third-party reviewers be selected to be eligible to conduct reviews for Baltimore projects?
Your question was, who would be eligible to do the third-party?
Yeah, or how would you go about selecting reviewers? Yes. Or how, how would they go, the selection process, who's eligible to do third-party project reviews or planning reviews?
So it's currently written in the code now that you need to be a licensed fire protection engineer or have a commensurate level of experience or education in doing this type of work. So that's would be our two major things that we would use. We could also do, be more diligent and offer training, give them five or six projects and, and evaluate them and then create a list of, of approved third-party. It's two. It's two different ways that you can go, you can roll it out quick. If you are licensed engineer, you are licensed at level three, you got a degree in X, Y, Z, you could be a certified reviewer, or we could roll out a whole process where we train them. So that, that, that much thought hasn't happened.
So I guess it's still being kind of flushed out on what that selection process?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I guess, sorry about that. Let me see. And when it comes to, I guess, the B more fast track program, I know part of it was, you know, we want to make sure we get a new permit system that's been rolled out. The other part is trying to eliminate any bottleneck within planning review. I know there's also multiple steps we talked about. You know, you later on report back what the date, what the dates are for each one. You know what the next top, like, let's say, three priorities may be on like flushing out this system? Do you have any idea what, what the next steps of the rollout would look like? Not necessarily giving dates, but just in the grans.
Yeah, it's a good point. So I mean, the, the two priorities are like having the director of permitting and development services and also having the advisory group, the B more fast group. And if people are interested in watching at home, there's a link on our mayor's office board to commission's site to, people can share their interest. The vision of that group would be in part to help guide the work and kind of figure out kind of the low-hanging fruit of what is like the early wins, to achieve success and to give some, to help show the public and developers that we are taking this seriously and we'll get, get results. So it's council president and I kind of independently kind of recognize the fire review is a, a pain point for many in the development community. So that's where we're focusing our time. And like the third-party review would be a big focus to get that rolled out as quickly as we can while doing it safely. Other things I'm excited about, like on, just on like having standardized staff directories. Because some, some agencies, the people who do reviews do not have their face or name or email or phone number. So having that standardized across the enterprise is where I like to go. Another one I'm excited about that will help, I think constituents is having one website that has all the public hearings in one place. Because a thing we hear, I heard in private practices, we never knew about that hearing because they didn't know where to go. And to be fair to the constituents, there's a hearing calendar on liquor board and the hearing calendar and the serving board and chap and planning commission, board of estimates. So having one place where by district or by neighborhood, you can see, hey, what's happening in my neighborhood? That's good for constituents, but also good for developers because there's no delays in the hearing. Because you go to a hearing and it's like, oh, I didn't know, we'll postpone for thirty days and come back. So having that kind of transparency will be good, I think, for everybody.
Got you. And my last question and then just make a statement. With those list out of, you know, next steps of B more fast track, do you, you see any of those, you know, proposals requiring any type of enactment legislation from the council?
I put a few in the recommendations in the report that would probably require legislation or code change. We were looking, I don't think this third-party review, for example, would require a change in the code. There were some other things kind of referenced, like, we're looking together to work together with the administration and the council on some of the things, the abundant housing and make it easier to build accessory dwelling, excuse me, accessory dwelling units across the city. So looking forward to that, but that would be obviously the council's purview. And then also looking forward to things like developers agreements, minor privilege, which I think are in the charter, so that would probably require probably council but to make a charter review reform. Because I think there's a lot of low-hanging fruit there on like the minor privilege process and to really reform it would require change. But there's some things we can do right now, like our fees for outdoor dining, in my mind, are not set in a way that makes sense. If we want to encourage outdoor dining in vibrant neighborhoods, but we're charging more for that than we are for like valet service. Like, what do we want to see as a city? And so how are we making our fees do what we want it to do? So that's something we could do internally, but the long-term reform will require council legislation. I look forward to working with you on that.
Got you. I, I would just ask if, you know, when you really get those, you know, potential changes concrete, if you can get those to us as soon as possible, that way we can comb through those. I appreciate that. And just as far, just in closing, I know when B more track, B more fast track or B more fast was first laid out, it was in a sense of this third-party inspector would be a new kind of polit-type thing? It was kind of proposed at one point, but talking to fire department, it kind of sounds more like a robust of the legislation that was passed last year that, that would allow folks to do the plan review stuff, do, do review plans and approve plans. So I would just figure out where, 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 where the two cross, cross kind of communications lie.
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of, it's, I guess the name is, it's coincidental or like the, the initiatives are coming together kind of at the same time. But the initiative that came last year was to help on big, big projects. So that, as Dawson and Eames would attest, like, the, the big projects, they were getting plans that just were not good sometimes. And so having the third-party requirement on big projects before you came into them, made sure they got plans that were actually decent and didn't take forty hours of them to review and comment on. That's one thing. So the thing we're talking about now, like going forward and we're going to roll out as soon as we can, is a third-party plan review for smaller projects that won't pose issues for safety, but will help free up the time. So that's, you know, that's what the fire piece, but there's going to be, and the report's something out now, is thirty other recommendations of things you want to look at through this B more fast initiative. And then through the work and through outreach, through stakeholders and this group, the advisory group, we're going to develop, I think, many more ideas and things that we talked about in our neighborhood sub-cabinet meeting about like smoke shop licensing, licensing, so is that something we should look at? It may not be more fast, but the point is like having multiple eyes on it and say, hey, maybe we need a better regime for regulating smoke shops, for example. So like, that's something that comes out of this. It's not really tied to it, but having just transparency and having a process where people are focusing on the issues, I think will yield good results.
Yeah, but if we can clear, clarify that without compromising people's safety and everything else, that'd be much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you all for your testimonies, appreciate it.
Perfect, confirming there, there any more questions for the fire department?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any for them.
You don't have any?
Not for the fire department.
Perfect, chief. You guys can go, I know you guys are tired. Councilman Blanchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deputy Mayor, Commissioner Kennedy. Thank you guys so much for, for all the work that everyone is putting in on this incredibly important thing. The thoroughness of this hearing is just a testament to how much we all care about getting this process right. To quickly kind of restate the council president's point when he was speaking, you know, if we want to thrive, we need to grow. If we want to grow, we need to build. If we want to build, we need to make sure that we're getting this permit process correct. I also think that, you know, probably in the future, it's the point that Deputy Mayor Williams just made of a lot of the challenge, there are challenges in the permitting process. There are also things legislatively that make it difficult to do a lot of this. And that's, you know, also, you know, on our side of the court as the council. So I think that is important to note as well. So a couple of questions. I think almost all of the members that had the chance to ask questions brought up the idea of talking about metrics, talking about, you know, expected timelines, this, this sort of thing. And I, I get that there's a huge amount of variation between things that may be within the same bucket of permits. So with that said, you know, for Deputy Mayor Williams' bigger picture, how do we, how do we know that, that B more fast is being more fast? Like in, you know, like a year from now or two years from now, how do we look back and say, hey, this worked? Not anecdotally, but actual data-wise?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, I'm looking forward to, and I haven't had an opportunity to dig into the Acela data that's available because I've let the team kind of focus on getting the implementation and rollout, right? But I'm looking forward to having the robust data that they, I know will be available to establish a baseline, because the timing kind of works out well that this initiative is launching as this software is there. So we'll have a baseline of permits and then we can see where we're going. I think other ways to have metrics are just, will we see more housing starts and more vibrant commercial quarters? It's not one-to-one, but I think just having the certainty we'll see investment. And I think we should, I mean, we'd be interested to do like a general sentiment survey and kind of see how people feel and like kind of the vibes. Because that's sort of what we need to get to is like Baltimore wants to be known as a, we want to be known as a place where people want to invest and they'll get a permit when they think they will. And so getting that certainty and seeing more investment, I think will be a way to kind of back into like, hey, we achieve what we want to achieve.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And I do think that's going to be hard to figure out exactly what that's going to look like. So we do need to kind of get creative and cobble together a couple of not-perfect things, right? More putting that, that data together. So, speaking of data, I guess that we do have though, the, the call center rates with the shift to three-one-one operators, the answer, raising answered rates from, from ten percent to ninety-eight percent between December of twenty-three and April of twenty-four. That's, that's obviously great, but for Commissioner Kennedy, do we, do we have a sense of like how many of these? What, like, do we have a sense of an increase of issues being solved versus just calls being taken? How do we assess that?
We do, and we can get you more information on that. B sit representatives had to leave, but we do know essentially on percentages in terms of how we track the, what call comes into the call center and then what type of call it was. So just some inquiries as of March fifth, we know that we had a hundred and thirty-one calls on that day. Nine were related to the e-permit site itself. We know that we had twenty-six just general questions, which sometimes have nothing to do with permits at all. They're just general questions and they get rooted. So we do have information on the type of calls that we're getting and then how those are managed. There's an escalation process within that from the call center. A lot of the call center staff is able to take care of, you know, a lot of things right there. And then there are some that are escalated through a process for additional follow-up.
Could we have that, that data broken down to see how, how that specifically, not just how the calls have been being answered over time, but, but if we are getting more effective, like, initial responses over time?
More effective initial response?
I guess, I guess the things that could be resolved, are they getting resolved on the front end? Or are these getting, are they getting pushed to someone else and then maybe that call is getting dropped? I recognize this is a difficult thing to assess, but, but whether the phone is getting picked up is, is important. And, and ten percent is, is really bad and certainly ninety-eight percent is much better. But it's, it's only a small piece of the conversation.
Correct. I think we can work with you to get some more information. I mean, we do know, you know, out of the number of calls, what the topic areas are and what's being handled on those calls, and we have the average length of time of those calls. And the referrals, yeah. And, and the referrals for the other, you know, that's being referred.
And I think that's like recognizing that February had the uptick because of the new system being implemented and all that. So, yeah, I think the intent for the, if the committee can request the information that would allow us to get more of an assessment of, of people who are getting through, how is that?
Yeah, and that came up actually in a, Deputy Hessler and I were talking about this on a couple of calls that had come through where it was like, my call was transferred, I was dropped or I couldn't get through. And we actually got to the person, we realized that they hadn't called the permit number. So they didn't call the four-four-three, you know, ninety-four, eighteen oh-nine number. And they had called either the operator or somewhere else and were being moved around. So it's also about really trying to get an understanding of, you know, when it was being dropped or it didn't go through. So we're trying to discern that as well, because several, some of the people we talked to, they didn't come to the call center.
Yeah, and I, I hear that. But, but having some way of, you know, whatever data you're looking at, if we can, to assess that, if we can have that as well, just to be aware of it is helpful. So I had a question that for the sake of time, I'm going to just turn into.
Can we clarify the question?
Can you rephrase that? Because Tony and I were trying to capture it.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the data that Commissioner Kennedy mentioned about looking at, how to say, the
Breakdown of.
Yeah, the, the breakdown of, of where things are getting routed, if they're being resolved, if they're unrelated, those types of, the analysis of the incoming calls that are being answered over, you know, the last sixteen months or so, since there's been the initiative to answer, to, to bring three-one-one into it, if we could have that analysis as well.
The breakdown of customer inquiries over time?
So, I mean, so we're asking for the last sixteen months, customer inquiries by topic and what the resolution was? I just want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly.
I, I just want to make sure, like, what we track is what, so are you good? Because we're going to get all of these from Tony and then I'm just going to send them out to the agencies.
No, I'm just trying to confirm with the commissioner and the councilman to make sure that we are memorializing his intent.
Yeah.
He wants the actual topic, how they were routed and the resolution is what I'm imagining.
So, you, Mr. Chair, I think the, the better way to say that, how many, what percentage of, or a better way to say what I was trying to say, what percentage of calls are being resolved? The, the breakdown is, is helpful, but if someone calls the permit office, of the calls that are getting picked up, answered, what percentage of those are being resolved there?
Got it.
So to be more explicit, because it's a call center, you're asking for whether the issue was resolved as in at the call center? Or was in, or versus whether it was referred to an actual technician? I just want to make sure.
I think those need to be distinguished and because we see this problem with three-one-one, right? Like, we can't mark something as closed just because it was referred somewhere else.
Okay, I just want to make sure we didn't give a broad thing and then you got something that you did not want. So again, confirm it.
I, yeah, that is, thank you for forcing me to clarify that. That was, my initial question was unclear and I apologize. This is what I get for trying to rush through things.
So, question, we're trying to distinguish, did you say the six, the eight months or eighteen? I heard three different numbers. I just want to make sure with that, the months were.
The, so the, the process started in December of twenty-twenty-three, was right before the, the initiative to include the three-one-one in the, in the call intake. So I think that would be the reasonable beginning of the analysis.
The, the call intake did not start until March of twenty-twenty-four. We started the process in the summer of twenty-twenty-three to create the call center. But
Okay.
The call center was March. And I can't confirm at this point what data B sit has available going back that far.
Okay. So if we can look at, if we can see what percentage of calls were resolved or referred, or whatever the outcomes of the calls were from March twenty-three, from March twenty-four, my apologies, March twenty-four to February of twenty-twenty-five. And if, and if data is unavailable for any period of time, just, I think, just let us know that the data was not being kept at that period.
And when is a reasonable time to provide that request?
I think we'd have to get back to you because the people that are responsible for that request are not here at the moment. So can we, we'll get back to you with a timeline.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, as long as, as long as we actually get it. The, so question that is now a statement for the sake of time. You mentioned the, the set of thirty-second videos and in helping with introduce novices and people who are new, new to the, to e-permits. I just wanted to highlight, there are some, you know, other user-friendly things that neighboring jurisdictions and similar municipalities are also doing. PG County, I think we have it up here. This is, let me shift over. So the ones that's on behind me is the city of Philadelphia. They do have processing times estimated in business days as well as filing fees for a list of different things. As well as PG County has this, I guess they have a set of flow charts. It's not necessarily the most user-friendly thing, but these processes are confusing. And so having something there for, for people wanting to see it, I think is, is really, you know, it's, it's really important. And it helps, it helps users as well as, you know, council matic offices know when, when something is breaking down or when it's just working when it, as it should be and should take time. So just wanted to, to raise that to your attention. And I think the last statement that I'll have, the so the And I think the last statement that I'll have, the, so the, maybe a twofold question. So when you have an an issue with the new system, like we've been hearing that there's there's a some a challenge with paying for BMZA appeals in the new system, as as just an example, how does, how are applicants, what is the process for applicants reporting the challenges that they're experiencing with the new system to DHCD? And then kind of twofold, my understanding is that the old system had a message board that would allow for applicants to respond directly to the reviewer, and the new system does not. So so how is there a way to, you know, what's available to communicate with the reviewer from the applicant?
So we'll start with the communication. There are multiple different ways that that persons can communicate with staff members. There's an email function within within the software, and those emails are actually logged in the permit record. So it's a different way to think about a message board, which was logging things within the record. And the responses from the customers are made to those specific email addresses as well. The first other question that you had, that was the second question.
Yeah, so the the second one was communicating to reviewers. The first one was communicating with the.
About the BMZA, yeah.
Any any sort of general issue with the new system.
So any general issue with the new system, the email address is dhcd dot permits at baltimorecity.gov. We've been monitoring all of that email traffic as well and have, you know, been responsive there. We also have the call center, so a lot of issues are actually taken through the call center by calling the four four three ninety four eighteen oh nine phone number. So those are the key things that I would tell the public is send the email to dhcd dot permits at baltimorecity.gov, call the call center, and majority of the issues are being taken care of either in the call center or through those emails. And just as a note, the BMZA payment issue was was fixed and taken care of. I think that was already fixed, yeah, that's already been fixed.
Okay.
I think also, sorry to interrupt, that you also have flagging like the common complaints through the call center, so the verstimate systemic is a review to make the changes.
True. So when we were looking at data, that's one of the things that we did in the first, like, week of the outroll through the call center. If we do see something where the majority of the calls are about a specific issue, we also are able to create different ways that we're managing that within the call center, routing calls to deal with that specific issue, et cetera. So we've been able to be nimble and responsive in that regard as well. But the key ways to report or have a question or have an issue is through the email and the phone number.
There is a, there's a contact sheet listed on the permit, like a pro site, that has all the email addresses on the different issues and who to contact. We also internally, we're meeting weekly with the leads for each agency to go over any issues that a agency internal are having. And then we have a permit Q and A session where anybody that uses the permit system internally can meet with the training officer and others and discuss those issues and go over them. And then we're meeting monthly with a focus group of heavy users from the old system and and into the new system, and they're relaying information to us as well as what they're seeing on their side. So trying to attack it from multiple angles.
And I'd also like to take a moment, we do have two trainings coming up in March that are available as well for people to register for for additional training.
So we have the, we've got the help email, we've got the call center, we have the upcoming trainings, we have the focus group, we have.
The contact sheet.
Yeah, okay. And then for, there is a a contact sheet for reviewers that you can email the reviewer directly when you have a question about the, is, did I understand that correctly from the?
Not the individual reviewers, but for the different agencies that would review. So.
Okay. So if I've got some issue with one aspect of the review process, I would have a contact for the agency that reviewer resides in. And so, okay. That is all my questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, colleagues. Are any other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go to public comments. Do we have anyone that signed up for a comment? Okay. He laughed. I believe this is a Nicholas Battles, Nicole Battle, she laughed. Lisa Jukner, Jukner? Okay. That's fine. Julie Tice? Okay. And is there a Ms. Sparks?
Mr. Chair, I actually have a an email that Ms. Tice, a very brief email that she sent me about as she was leaving, and basically just said, number one priority, read third party reviews, please consult neighboring jurisdictions on how they on how they do this and what works well. The lack of collaboration with our sister cities is a frustration, and we we waste a lot of resources reinventing the will. So that was that was her concern that she relayed to me when she had to leave.
Thank you. If you can forward that to Anthony so we can add it to the committee's record, that way it's available online as well for anyone who wasn't here and for Evan, Almen and the record. Is there any public, anyone present who would like to provide public testimony that did not sign up? Please state your name for the record, and then you will have three minutes for remarks.
Yeah, hello, my name is Jeff Dewberry. I'm representing the Society for the Preservation of Feral Hill and Fells Point. I'm the vice president for that. We are serve as the design review committee for both Fells Point, and we do some Feral Hill stuff. A little bit about me, I've been working with permits for about ten years now within the city of Baltimore. And unfortunately, when we're working with folks, excuse me, especially folks that are going into the permit system, they really just do not understand what's going on or how to get a permit. A lot of that has to deal with the elimination of the one stop shop where you could send people physically to a building to talk to someone and talk to a reviewer. I will give you an example for ourselves. The society is right now in a massive rehab project for the ship Cawker's houses. I have, we have a permit that has been sitting now ten days, and it sits as TBD. It has no reviewer assigned, no, no one assigned to it. You know, I have no idea when we're speaking with folks on what will be the status of that, and that's what we hear constantly from folks, especially dealing with the CHAP district end, is the fact that it doesn't even seem CHAP has been built into this process yet. We're still sending PDF documents over to CHAP and Eric Holcomb and those folks, which they are great to work with, but trying to track a PDF document sent via email is just unbelievable in the year twenty twenty five. I also firmly believe, especially within the historic districts and other districts, is the fact that the city is losing revenue because people give up on this permit process. People say, I'm just going to do it, I'll deal with that, and and we'll go from there. That brings up my other point is, especially with this new system, I've worked with Acela in various ways, but if I can tell how long my food delivery is going to take me to get to my doorstep, I should be able to have a marker within the permit system to tell me where I'm where I'm at, or I'm at a reviewer. I've also heard comments about, you know, being able to communicate with the reviewers as your permit works along. That's tough, because you may have to call the call center, you may have to call the reviewer, or they may not understand what they're looking at, and then you start this back and forth with email and everything. You know, in the end, I would say, you know, a lot of the comments about the call center and everything, I think this equates to the the picture that was used in World War Two, where you had the planes returning from a flight, and you could see the bullet holes ever shot shot through the plane. What we are not looking at is why that, why people aren't going through the system. And I think probably a key indicator or a key performance metric that could be used is if we see that unreported, unpermitted, reported work goes down with the new system. But, you know, I do have hope, but I think it's still a long way, and I think is something that definitely has to be done, especially now, and I think we have to get out of this this kind of cycle of people just saying, I don't know how to do this, it's too complicated, I'm just going to do it myself. That is lost revenue to the city that could be easily be used for other things or could make this process better. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present that would like to provide public testimony? Okay, with that, I will yield to, you're right, I'm trying to get home. Is there anyone in the online environment that would like to provide testimony? You can use the raise hand function to be recognized. No function, so I will yield to the sponsor for closing remarks, and then we will recess. Oh, President.
I want to thank everybody who stuck it out with us today. This is, if you hadn't noticed, is kind of a new format of how we're doing oversight where we've got sort of chunks of time as opposed to doing a round robin. So it will take a little longer, but I think you'll get deeper questions and better answers. At least that's our hope. And as I think the mayor's office can tell from all of our questions and DHCD, this is a super high priority for all of us, and we want to be a part of the solution. We will continue to ask the tough questions and want to have those timelines, because we're not just hearing from our constituents, but as the gentleman said earlier, I mean, this is something very important for our city and in so many different ways. So this is not going to be the last hearing, there'll be more. And, you know, we will follow up with the timelines and the things that were committed today. There's a lot more detail that we didn't get into, specifically me, but I think that, you know, everybody has some other questions, so we'll have some more opportunities. But I want to thank Mr. Chair, the committee, and Mr. President for making this a big priority, because this is such a a key piece of the larger puzzle that needs to be put together to address the vacant properties, grow our city, and make sure that folks know that Baltimore is open for business. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll yield to the president.
Thank you, Madam Councilwoman. Thank you for your leadership on this topic. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for conducting a really strong hearing. Deputy Mayor Williams, I know this is a topic for which you are no stranger, and you are extremely passionate, and I appreciate the enormous amount of thought and energy that you have put into this plan. I caution about not trying to boil the ocean. I think that there are a great number of things within this plan, and if we try to do all of them at once, it will fail. And so I would urge the administration to choose two or three things that we could actually move the needle on. I think you heard a lot about the fire department. I think you also heard a lot about plans review and third party. You also heard about the call center, work within DHCD. But I think the expectation for this council is that you're able to come back with some clear commitments around timelines and deliverables. I do appreciate the sincere, thoughtful effort and the partnership that you've demonstrated. I would just say that if we try to do everything, we're not going to do anything. And so please focus on a few of the key indicators where we can truly move the needle, because like Councilmember Ramos said, this is extremely important, and it is firmly within our control. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, Madam Commissioner, all the folks that stuck around for a late hearing, and really appreciate the chair conducting this hearing and just the thought and energy that went into it by my staff, by everyone's staff. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. With that being said, the expectation moving forward is to have a Lisa Corley oversight hearing on permits. With that, we will send out potential dates to the administration to have some key performance measures to think thought about, but also agreement on what data we should present to the public as well moving forward. Thank you.